Meeting to order, this is the Public Works Environmental Services Committee of the Hall, January the fourteenth.
February.
Nineteenth. February nineteenth, correct. Okay. Yeah, I got the wrong one here. Okay, approval of the agenda. Mr. Packwood and Mr. Hunter, or Counselor Hunter? So approved.
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move it. Okay, we'll move on to number three, peculiar disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof.
None here.
None here. None. Business arising from the previous Public Works Environmental Services Facilities Committee, if any.
I have two.
I have two. Ms. Cao?
Okay, so on page three of six, item number D. Now, there was a date for something.
What number?
Page three of six, item D.
QMS?
I think this was the mandatory training process. It was noted that staff will look at having a seminar in-house for committee and staff at a later date. I'm just wondering if it was a date established yet.
Through the chair, there has not been a date established yet. Hopefully, maybe at next committee meeting, we can, we can look at a date. I know it's been a busy schedule for everybody.
Now, am I right? That's the, the training session for?
That, that is, that is correct. It's the section nineteen, standard of, of care under the Safe Drinking Water Act. It is, it is training, our training session.
Okay, so that's the first one. And then on page six of six, and I didn't, I did just have a quick chance to talk to CIO before she left out of the holidays, but I'll just ask through the chair to the treasurer of the, uh, acting CIO, do we know anything at all about what's happening with our money from the seven thirty truck stop fire? Is there any movement at all here?
Um, through the chair, no, no further communication from our lawyer has been received to date.
Nothing.
Nothing recently, no.
Okay, just want to keep that alive, Mr. Chair.
Any other, any other business?
Nope.
And could we note that Counselor Delva joined us at six thirty-five?
The chairs are in light.
No problem. Okay, number five, delegations and presentations. We do have the Spencerville rate study and Director of Operations, Mr. Grant, is going to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, so we've, we've completed the Spencerville sewer rate study. Just a little introduction, the, the study sort of has its origins based on the Spencerville Legion complaint in the fall of twenty eighteen with respect to the fairness of the multiplier rate that they were being charged. Following this, council directed that a rate study be undertaken to confirm fairness of the, of the multiplier rates and the overall rate charges issued to, to those users. So, staff issued an RFP in, in late fall, I believe November first, and with the closing date of mid-November, there was no response based off of this. We did receive one additional response after the closing date from an engineering firm, and the, the estimated cost to perform that review was, was in excess of thirty thousand. So, the staff looked at forming an internal committee, and we formed that committee, and the results of that study are before we take. So, the overall purpose of the study was to analyze the wastewater user charges, to evaluate bill structure alternatives, and to recommend opportunities to provide a fair and equal billing structure for all users. Our feeling is that the, that the group did accomplish this task. System background, the entire system was constructed in eighty-nine ninety. It consists of two stabilization ponds with a rated capacity of hundred sixteen thousand cubic meters. We have three pumping stations, about a thousand meters of forced main, thirty-six manholes, and about thirty-three hundred meters of PVC sewer main. The first part of the study looked at the, a little bit of historical analysis, so we reviewed the previous five years of twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. So, we took the average system expense, we took the annual flow, and just by some very basic math, the, the estimated cost for a cubic meter of wastewater was determined to be about a dollar ninety-four cents.
Just a question, David?
Sure.
The, the one thirty-one zero ninety-six, that's the average for the five years?
That is the average for the five years.
So, that would be equivalent to per year?
Yes, that's an average of those five years.
Okay, thank you.
And then, at what point are the flows measured?
The flow, the flows are measured at the, at the inflow of the, of the lagoon.
Okay, so we have a meter there's?
We have a meter there at the inflow of the, of the lagoon. So, basically, through that analysis, we took the twenty eighteen residential charge, which was basically the, the annual charge divided by three hundred sixty-five days, worked out to a dollar eighty-one a day. So, our determination was that about a dollar forty-one was being spent on operating and about forty cents going into reserves. So, based on this calculation, we, we did a, just some, some basic math of forty cents by three hundred sixty-five days in the year with the one hundred and forty-one connections, and it estimated it would pay about twenty, twenty thousand five eighty-six that should be going into reserve a year after operating. So, in, in calculating everything, what it really worked out to be is about fifty-eight cents going into reserves a year and a dollar twenty-three for operating. And this additional third, instead of the twenty thousand, roughly thirty thousand, and it's basically due to savings in operating costs, whether that's reduced equipment repair, chemicals, et cetera, that, that may be, really are attributed to additional money going into reserves. I thought it would be interesting to, to see sort of the customer category evaluation, the overview of the customers and their contributions. You see the system revenue is about fifty-two percent residential. And if you look at the sewer connections by that same category, there's about seventy-eight percent connections are residential. So, there, there is a little bit of a discrepancy in, in that end of it, but certainly not uncommon in those systems. If you have any questions, let me know from interview through who.
David, excuse me, David. ICI, what's that?
Industrial Commercial Institution.
Thank you.
My fault, I shouldn't have used the, the acronym without having that written there someplace. So, the next, the next phase in the study, we, we looked at the projected revenues and expenses for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. So, the chart shows sort of a net gain of twenty thousand six hundred thirty-three for the alternative rate structure. So, you'll notice that whether we use the alternative rate structure or the, the existing rate structure, there, there is sort of growth in the reserve balance. It, you'll notice in twenty twenty that it does drop, and that's basically, we're projecting to, to look at doing some upgrades to pump and station one, moving from single phase to three phase, to, I think it's been mentioned a few times that we are pulling a lot of, of pumps, and, and the single phase pumps that we have in place now wear out a lot faster than what we found in our system in, in Cardinal with the three-phase flight pumps, they last substantially longer. So, there is a good return on investment after additional cost.
And the less operating cost for copper too in the three-phase too.
That, that is correct. We do anticipate some savings in that end of it as well.
At pump station one, that's the main pumping station at Drummond.
That is the main pumping station at, at Drummond, I guess. So, the alternative rate structure that, that was developed, we, we did it based on principles of fairness, revenue adequacy and security, simplicity and affordability. So, similar to your tax rate, we, we use the base residential unit as a value of one. And the base residential fixtures unit is, is, is ten, and that allows for a range between eight to fourteen. So, whether, whether that's an apartment that has X number of fixtures, it does allow for potentially an additional toilet, or one, one place that may have a dishwasher and, and a location that doesn't, it sort of summarizes it and characterizes it as, as fairly close for those residential locations.
So, what, you only has six fixtures?
The minimum that it could have for, for an apartment with D eight.
This is many, this is an apartment, it's Indy structure.
So, the minimum residential.
So, there's a minimum of one?
The, the value is one.
Correct.
So, the minimum residential fixture units in, in, in an apartment would, would equal eight.
Oh, the minimum?
The minimum fixture count.
Cause?
So, that would, that would include a bathroom sink, a toilet, a shower, and a kitchen sink.
Give it this slide that I'm looking at doesn't refer to a multi-residential, but I see what you're saying.
Yes. So, resident, so, so residential is a residential, whether it's an apartment or a single-family dwelling. So, so that, that's, that's consistent with the, with the current rate structure that's in place?
Questioning that, David?
Certainly.
Regardless of the number of fixtures, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be more use. I mean, if a house or an apartment has two toilets, for instance, the two people or three people or four people, they're going to use one toilet or another at some period through the day, but you're going to use the same amount of water if you use one toilet or if you use two.
So, the, the, the number of fixtures equate to the potential quantity that can be used?
So, what are you?
Without, without a measure, a true measuring device, there, there's certainly no way that you can equate what a particular apartment would use versus, versus a home. So, there's nothing to say that, that a, an apartment couldn't use as much as a home. And that is, that is why we've, we've placed that value as, as one, or that average of ten fixtures. Okay, so?
So, what do you do if you've got an apartment building with four units in it, and, and there's only a total of twelve fixtures in the whole building? So, that would be twelve divided by ten, give you a multiplier of two, that building would play two times the base rate.
So, in, in, in all fairness, if, there wouldn't be an apartment that wouldn't have their own toilet.
Okay.
And a bathroom sink.
Okay, so you're looking at a kitchen sink?
And a shower and a kitchen sink.
And, and taps?
So, so, so the kitchen sink includes those fixtures?
Be a minimum of four per apartment, no matter what.
There's, so there's, so, so there's a minimum of eight fixtures per apartment?
Oh, eight.
A minimum.
How do you get eight? Like if you had a toilet?
As, as I said, for each single apartment, would we, would, would we agree that you would have a toilet?
Yeah.
So, don't, don't take it as, as a toilet equals one.
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, so a shower?
Yeah.
Kitchen sink, and a bathroom sink. So, that equals a fixture count of eight.
Well, I thought it'd be four.
No, that's what I said, you can't take, you can't take a toilet as equaling one. A toilet may equal two within that table of the building code. So, everything, every, so, so each fixture has an associated unit value.
Oh, I didn't realize.
So, you double up?
So, not, not necessarily. You may, you may have the, the bathroom sink one and, and the toilet maybe, maybe a three count.
What happens if you had a house in with two bathrooms, say, a residential, two baths?
So, what we, so what we looked at was that, that's a maximum of fourteen.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's why you have that range, and what we've done is taken it and said, okay, it's ten.
Okay, so I can see where you're going here. You're gonna, you're gonna try to work it on fixture units, I guess, and you say it's based on the building code, but, but my, my?
We're going, we're going, we're going to use, we're going to use those fixture units as the basis for, for our non-residential.
Okay, but the fixtures really doesn't?
So, the number, so the number of fixtures, based on the size of the drain pipes on those fixtures, equate to a particular potential volume you can actually put down that sewer. Because there, because all those fixtures are based on, on, on a particular size pipe.
Doesn't rate, really relate to use though?
It cer, it certainly relates to, to potential use.
Yes, I can see that.
So, with, as indicated, without an actual measuring device, how, how would you, how would you ever determine? Then, then you're starting to get into, hey, well, I only use my toilet once a day.
Yeah, 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 I've heard all those.
So, that, exactly, so, so it takes all that in, you have the potential to contribute this amount.
Yeah.
Whether you do or not, at this, at this particular stage, we can't control.
Okay, I understand, but I know potential.
Okay, so, so everything is based on potential demand on the system?
Which really doesn't take into consideration a, a single person living in a two-bedroom home versus a family of five living in, in a single bathroom dwelling. It's only potential use, but it doesn't take into consideration that five people may live in a residence versus one?
Uh, well, that, that is correct, but there's?
But it's potential.
I, I, you, you could make an argument that the single person can use more than five.
So, but where I get the problem?
I, I, so, so a, as far as, as theory goes, it's based on potential. So, so the, the pipe size is the pipe size. You need a, by the building goes, you need a certain pipe size as, as an outlet, as a drain, so, in that particular way, because you may, you may have a single person living alone, and they may have twenty people over every Saturday night to equal the, the, the use of five. We don't, we don't, we don't want to get, we don't want to get into something that's not manageable.
So, by def, sorry, through the chair.
Sure.
By definition, then, equality, when it, when it comes back to this study, relates nothing to the structure of family using the home or the residence itself, is potential output?
That is correct.
Okay.
It is, it is based on potential contradiction or demand on that system.
But, but equality doesn't relate back to who lives there or anything like that at all?
That is correct, because that is impossible to, that is impossible.
Sure.
And, and to regulate for that matter, non-discriminatory. It is.
But, but all residential dwellings, no matter whether they were three-story or single-story, would be rated as one?
If it was a triplex, they would be rated as three.
No, no, I'm just talking about single-family dwellings. They'd be rated as one.
That's correct.
Okay. Where I have my trouble is when I try to extrapolate the model that you're basing to something like a school.
Correct.
Which has multiple users during the day, but limited numbers of fixtures. And?
I think, I think, I think, I think as we move forward into the presentation, you'll see that they?
Go ahead.
They have substantially more fixtures than what you would find in a house.
Okay, because of the building code, way the building code reads?
That is cor, that is correct. Because, because of the occupant load, so to speak, they're required to have X amount of, right?
Okay.
X amount of toilets.
So, the building code picks it up?
So, the building code picks that out. That's why we're using that as, as, as the basis, because it provides that consistency and fairness.
Okay, I, I get the picture now.
So, if we, if we look at the rate structure, so for instance, for a mixture or an ICI location, we simply take the number of fixture units, so that totals up, and we, we divide it by the residential base unit of ten, which we established earlier for, for residential. So, an ICI location that had a fixture unit count of fifty would pay five times the base residential rate.
I can see that.
Our overall comparison versus the current rate structure versus an alternative rate structure, as far as simplicity and affordability and revenue adequacy, they both check the boxes. With respect to fairness, we believe that the alternative rate structure provides that fairness based on the formula that we just presented, and it also provides defendable position.
Well, but why did you keep coming back to the building code?
Correct, and that, that, that is, that, that is the, the basis and the premise of this, is that it will always, it will always be referred back to that table in building code. So, the conclusion is that the study group supports the alternative rate structure and would recommend the phased-in approach for the locations listed below.
Those are, those four locations are going to get an increase of, as, as compared to the existing structure?
Dramatic. That is correct.
But what I don't understand is, and I, I can see from the chart that, that the increase that they get is fairly substantial, but why are we phasing it in?
The, the feeling of the committee is that it would, it would be a fair approach to, to, to slowly phase that in because there is such a dramatic change. You're looking at potentially doubling what your cost is in one year. It, it, it doesn't seem appropriate.
Are these four, are they, are they ICIs? Are they institutional, commercial, or industrial?
Those would all be considered ICIs.
All four?
All four.
See, I don't know the locations or what's at those locations, but, I mean, I can see, for example, Eighteenth Center Street, is that this building?
That would be this building.
Goes from nine ninety-three to two zero zero seven.
Correct.
So, it goes up by a thousand dollars a year. Twenty-two Sloan, is that the library?
No, that's the arena.
That's the arena.
Thank you.
Goes from twenty-six forty-eight to forty-six. And Ryan Street, twenty-six forty-eight to fifty-three fifty-two. Where's, what's twenty-two Ryan Street?
That is the Drummond building.
And then Seven Henderson goes from three, three thousand three hundred to six thousand three hundred. Where's Seven Henderson?
That is the school.
That's the school. I guess my problem is, I appreciate your clarification that, that the fixture count is taken from the building code. You don't go around into the building and count the fixtures. You say a school, for example, that has a toilet, has a rating of X.
So, so in, so, so for, for the context of this study, we, we did visit the school, and we, we visited about fifty percent of the, of the ICI locations.
Did they check out?
And we did, we did, we did count those fixtures, and that's what you have.
Yeah, okay.
Within that, within that chart. And part of that recommendation would be that the remaining ICIs be renewed, because some, some of those are, are based on assumption, but for the most part, we're, we're fairly confident that most of the, most of those remaining locations would, would fall into that ten range.
Now, the problem comes though, when you, when you start implementing this new system in twenty nineteen, then we see, and I, I don't remember just where I saw it, probably later in the agenda, yeah, probably at seven B the agenda, where we, where we see a, a reduction in revenues.
You, you will, if you use the phased-in approach, you will see a, a reduction in, in revenue for the first couple of years as, as that runs on?
It's the loss of revenue that bothers me. I, I understand the study, I appreciate the, the presentation of the study and the, and the work that's gone into it and the philosophy behind it, I, I get that now. Phased-in approach, I think you're reading, through the chair, I just think the phased-in approach, I think I read someplace it's four years, right?
That is correct, we, we would recommend four years.
I would go with less than four, but two or?
When you say four, that means twenty twenty-three would be the, the increase for these four properties, like four years?
Twenty, twenty-two, right.
Nineteen twenty-one, twenty-two, okay, so twenty twenty-two?
Before, before they're fully up to that, to, to that, to that level. So, for instance, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't, I don't have that chart in front, but I, I know there's one that, that is currently at four and, and moves to eight. So, basically, it would go up five this year, six, seven, and then reach its eight multiplier in, in year four.
Would you be adverse to phasing it in over two years?
That is cer, that is certainly the, the, the will of committee and council. Our recommendation was to, to keep with that principle of, of affordability and not a, a, a dramatic impact to, to the locations right off the bat.
Through the chair? I think I see a, about a phase in here, really. I don't think cats had a really agree with going a phased-in approach, because basically out of the four of them, there's only one of them that's, I'd say, several is the Drummond building, others here are all government, so two of them are ours and one on the school board, so it's just, two of them is just a matter of us transferring money from one account to another account to cover in the school board. Here, four thousand dollars different a year isn't going to make any difference to them, it's just the, the Drummond building that's going to make a difference, and there's always other ways to deal with, with some of the hard stress with council, to deal with, help them.
What's that address of the Drummond?
That's twenty-two Ryan.
Twenty-two Ryan.
Through the chair?
Certainly. Due to the age of the system, it started, what, nineteen ninety? Is three hundred thousand going to be enough when it comes to cleaning oodles and that? Because that's going to be an issue soon, wouldn't it?
Through, through the chair, what we, what we started probably over, over ten years ago, probably closer to fourteen now, was the use of a shacked-made biodegester to, to reduce the, the buildup within, within those cells, but yes, event, eventually at some point, those, those cells will be required to be dredged. Or there, there are now some, some different newer technologies that are available that would be certainly less of a capital impact if they're done that way. They can keep the, basically, the, the contents are, are left in, sort of in service, and it's, it's act- it's, it's actually, uh, like a vacuum system that would actually remove that. There's a little limited knowledge on that, but yes, that, that's certainly a costly venture when that becomes due to, to be completed. So we're, yeah, we're probably looking at, uh, at, in the next ten years.
Mr. Grant, what's the lead-in's address on this?
Off the top, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not sure. But if you're, if you're, if, if you're, if you're looking at what the multiplier was before and what it is after, uh, it was five prior, and I believe it's four in-
I'm just looking at your, uh, proposal and changes. So I want to know-
On, on, on the Benetton Street?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll see, we'll see a location, um-
What is that street anyways?
It would be, uh, Benet-
Bennett?
Bennett Street, yeah, twenty-seven Bennett. It's twenty-seven, so it would be twenty-seven Bennett.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you look across there, you'll see that the current system is multiplier of five, and it'll go to a multiplier of four.
So they'll be down at six hundred and thirty-four dollars a year.
That's correct.
So, uh, other than the, I mean, it, I'm pretty heavily influenced by the effect that it's going to have on the reserves, and I'm looking at page five of the study. Page five of the study is rather convincing that it's going to, uh, help the reserves move well, we don't know because we don't get comparison, but by implementing this rate structure, the reserves would move from the two seventy-six to two ninety-nine over the five-year period. What worries me is that I'm just not so sure that two ninety-nine is the right number that we should be looking at, but that always can be addressed through, uh, that could always be addressed through a rate increase. But, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't see as a result of this presentation, um, well, of course, we're going to get to seven A, don't we?
We have to get to the end.
Yes, okay, I'll, I'll be patient.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay, we'll move on, we're now at seven, uh, so seven A is now the Spencerville rate study, and, uh, we've partially discussed some of it, so it's open. And we don't have a recommendation on this, do we? Through, through the chair, the recommendation comes at seven B. That's, okay, thank you.
Okay, the recommendation comes at seven B.
Seven B, yes, at the Spencerville water, wastewater budget. Now, do we have any more discussion on the, on the rate study?
Yes, uh, I would like to beat to death the idea of a four-year phase-in. I'd like to know where everybody stands with the four-year phase-in. I, I personally, I'd rather see it phased in faster than, than four years.
Could we, uh, could we, would you possibly consider phasing in, uh, all except the one? Phasing the, the three, the other three that Counselor Hunter suggested, and, uh, and phase in the, do those, do those three immediately, and then phase in the fourth, uh, the fourth unit, which would be-
Over two years.
Over two years would be fine.
Or a dual.
And through the chair, I'd, I'd sooner just say is bring it in and work it differently for the Fair Board, we have a grant, I suggested earlier, we have a grant structure, community grant structure that we could-
You know, one year?
Help out-
For one year?
Fair Board, but, well, whatever the committee gives time, but I don't think we should play favoritism between public, Fair Board, or school board, or whatever, if we, I say, oh, industrial, commercial, should treat them all the same, bring it in and deal that after, so.
So it's-
Through the chair, I, I'm agreeing with, uh, Counselor Hunter, I, I, I myself would like to go twenty-four months, all four units, maximum, in two years, not forty-eight.
What about all four?
In 2019.
Yep.
In other words, this, what we're basically doing is going to, when we get to seven B, we're setting the rates for 2019.
Correct.
The question is, do these four get the new rate in 2019, or do they get half in 2019 and half in 2020?
I would be for putting it in in 2019, that's my, that's my opinion.
Well-
Any other-
Mr. Chair, I have no comment because I'm on the Fair Board. So, so, well, you're good, perfect one to ask, through the chair, the perfect one to ask, is this a hardship? I mean, I'm looking, I don't know, I don't have the slightest idea of what, where the Fair Board stands with regard to their annual budget, but is a two, twenty-seven-hundred-dollar increase, they're at twenty-two Ryan Street, is a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar increase in their water sewer rate material to them and their budget?
Through, 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 through the chair, I don't believe that that should be a question that, that he should be answering.
That's a fair comment.
I, I agree.
Fair comment. Unfair question, sorry.
Mr. Hunter, any other?
No more comments until we get to the next section.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
No, not really.
Counselor Dillawatt?
Uh, no, I'm sticking with my, uh, point of view.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor?
I'll wait till seven B, so wherever we have to.
Okay.
I think just-
Go ahead.
I've got it, it's, it's nothing to do with what we're talking about, it's, well, it is, but I'm just trying to find the, the line again. I'm still struggling on the fairness part, and I know it's not what we were, what we were just talking, talking about at all, but going back to the purpose of the study, and I can't find the line, it was number, number one was, was fairness and-
Correct.
Uh, just the study's lacking a word, what, which would be possible usage versus, uh, the, the fairness suggests that it's putting back on, on actual user, uh, on actual usage versus potential usage. So four main principles and objectives, fairness, the user rate should recover, the sewage system cost through a user pay system, that is, the customer charges fairly reflect system usage. Just my only observation there, I feel like Jerry at the moment, uh, would be, uh, reflect possible system, system usage. That's accurate.
Through the chair, a comment on that?
Yes.
I don't think really, the only way you're going to get a usage charge is have, have meters on it. And I think-
Right.
Our mayor and, and committee chair here both would fear that, and our, our committee chair was off at the time, and we were on at the time, we put water meters in, in Cardinal, and everybody thought they were going to save a whole lot of money, but other than a couple of commercial buildings that got bumped up, and a few or four others that got bumped down, most of the residential ones afterwards commented, they thought it was a waste of four hundred thousand dollars in, in money, because all it really accomplished was a, another job for somebody to read meters electronically or, or by hand, and one more thing for the township to keep up. You've got a small system and a big system, and I think our mayor and I were both at a AMO conference, that we sat through a water thing, the guys got up before we did it, and said, you're crazy doing this, because we did it, and, and all it did was costing money for meters, it didn't, didn't save the people any, because your base rates got to be paid by somebody along the way, and here we've got, what, a hundred and seventy-four residents, something like that, a hundred eighty maybe that can tie in, when you've got a possibility over the next few years, it may be another thirty or forty lots available that could be tied in, into it, so, like, there's not much other way of doing it, I don't want to divide it up equally as close as we can, and not going to save anybody any money by trying to meter stuff, so.
But through the chair, one of the things that meters did accomplish was that they, people perceived them to be fairer because they, they don't realize that, and I'll get help, through the chair if I can, I'll get some help from the director here, when we set our, our rates on the Cardinal Water, we set the rates in such a way that we were going to collect, I believe it was sixty percent of our operating cost from the base and forty percent from the usage, have I got that right? Sixty, forty?
Through, through, through the chair, uh-
Or is it the other way around?
The, the feeling was that it was going to be, um, sixty base and forty, um, consumption.
Yes.
However, the, the rates setting come back, and it was basically, I believe, forty base and sixty consumption.
Oh, okay.
And that's why we ran into the shortfall in that initial first year.
Right. So, but, but what it did do, it did away with the argument that I'm alone in my house and making the same as the guy next door that's got four kids. That argument went away.
Yeah, correct. Through, through the chair.
Yes.
Is it, but, but back to that comment, um, it, that first year of, of that, of that, when the meters were put in, was, did consumption go to, go down?
Uh, through, through the chair, yes, and, and actually, I believe we had forecasted a ten to fifteen percent drop, and it was close to thirty-five percent.
Which would, which would then indicate that meters actually reduce, reduce consumption, thus increasing, uh, the cost per, per meter discharged?
Correct.
Thank you, for the first year.
Through, through the chair, just, just to, to respond, to the deputy mayor, on page six of the report, um, after the four main principles and objectives, you'll see a spot where, where it indicates that they're providing a weighting factor based on their potential additional contribution or demand of the system compared to residential.
I keep getting lost.
So, under, under section four, which could be page six of the, of the report?
Yeah, I'm not on that, I'm doing mine a little bit.
Page twenty-seven on the PDF.
Twenty-seven, thank you.
There's only twenty-one pages off.
I'm on the wrong direction, big time. Sorry, where were we?
So, I, I would say in the second last paragraph on, on that page, you'll see categories other than residential are provided a weighting factor based on their potential additional contribution or demand of a system compared to the residential demand.
I'm good.
Okay, any other, any other questions? No concerns? No? Okay, we'll move on then to seven B, which is the Spencerville wastewater budget. This is where it all comes out. And we do have a recommendation, and it's a four-step, uh, four-step recommendation. It's on page two. And Mr. Grant, would you like to, uh, enlighten us a little more? Certainly, Mr. Chair, I, I think we've sort of reviewed the, the, the overall Spencerville system in, in pretty good detail through the, through the rate study report, so, so basically, what we're, what, um, looking for is that the committee accept the recommendations contained in that rate study report, and adopt a seven-dollar, one percent annual increase to the base residential unit, and use the alternative, uh, rate structure for non-residential units. Naturally, there, there appears to be some discussion on the third point with respect to the phased-in approach, of four years for those four locations identified, and basically, drafting a bylaw to, to adopt the, the, the rates, so. Now, we have some discussion on item number three, I think, regarding the, the phased-in over four years, or, or whatever we, we do decide.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, the way I read the table, uh, with comments that you heard, we're either talk, on, on number three, we're either talking about a twenty-four month, that's a two-year period, phase in, or, or no phase in. So that's where I read the table, I don't see anybody at the table speaking in favor of the four-year phase-in period, so-
Just to clarify that, then we could actually scrap number three.
Well, on, on-
If that's, if that's the will.
If, if we can get to, if we can get to the point where everybody agrees that it, that it should be implemented immediately, then we can eliminate number three, but I have Counselor Dillawatt that's still looking for a two-year phase-in, unless we can convince him. Now, we could put motion on floor and see what happens.
Okay, Counselor Dillawatt, are you still adamant on the, on the two-year phase-in? Or could you be changed?
Through the chair, no, I'm sticking to twenty-four months with the Drummond units, now the three I'll go immediately, not the Drummond.
Okay.
Twenty-four months for the, for that one?
For the Drummond Building.
Do you have a motion then, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So my motion would be that, that we accept the recommendation exclusive of number three, which would be rewritten as follows. Use a phased-in approach over a two-year period for twenty-two Ryan Street. And then the rest of the recommendation would stay the same.
Deputy Mayor?
Do you have to move on, or?
Not yet. Unless, we're still discussing.
Well, I'm looking for a second.
You have to second, right, so we're discussing.
I've got, I've got a motion on the table that needs a second.
I'll second that one.
And we have a member on the second, so we know we will not discuss it.
Uh, just so that I'm clear, the other three are properties that, that are township property?
No, two, and then the school.
And the school board is the other one. No, I'm fine.
Counselor Hunter?
I can do that, we're going to give them a break one more, I'm sure, so.
Mr. Packwood?
I'm staying for the Fair Board.
True. All right, and I will, and I will, I will agree with the, with the recommendation as well. So I will now call, I will now call the question as to the recommendation as, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie? You got that?
Sorry, just for procedural, uh, we just voted on the amendment itself, now we have to respond to the overall-
No, 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 the motion that's on the floor was not the motion that's in the paper.
Correct, so you are amending that motion?
No, I'm not, there's no motion to be amended. It's a recommendation. I didn't put the recommendation forward, I put motion forward that was different than the recommendation.
All right.
So I, 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 I think, I, I think for clarity, it probably is best that the recommendation be defeated, and then the amended recommendation be, be approved, which would be the same thing except excluding three. I, I can see that. We've got to, either, either, it's got to, either the First Amendment, the first recommendation has to be amended, or it has to be defeated.
No, it doesn't. No, because it's not on the floor. There's a recommendation in front of us that I'm not using. I'm putting motion on the floor that council, one, two, and for three, use a phased-in approach over a two-year period for twenty-two Ryan Street, and four, that's the motions on the floor.
So, so through, through the chair, would we consider that just a friendly amendment? No, we will.
Not amended. Staff doesn't put motions on the floor, reports don't put motions on the floor. Help me out here.
Is, uh, is, is staff comfortable with, uh, just, uh, changing the amendment, we'll say? with the, the recommendation to, to hold this?
Through the chair, we do, we do have the amended recommendation reported. Thank you.
Good. Any, any questions on that? Any concern?
I have to agree, but our mayor is not really a, a recommendation, an amendment. It's a new, a new motion that's forward. We're not even dealing with the recommendation. We're just putting a motion forward.
So then, in my way of thinking, I, I would think we have to defeat the recommendation. It is held.
No motion on the floor. There's twenty-one motion on the floor at the time.
We don't, we don't have to deal with any recommendations brought to us as a committee.
That is correct. That, that, that is correct. However, we have, we have, we have the clear recommendation that was put forward.
Clear, clear motion, motion.
The motion, I'm sorry. Right. And staff can deal with that? Okay, we've, we've carried that. Thank you. Okay, now we can move on. And we're going to move on to seven C and the two thousand and nineteen Cardinal Water Budget. And I believe Mr. Grant has the floor one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just highlight a couple items within, within the draft budget. Operating and maintenance, a portion of the two thousand and nineteen budget is around thirty-seven hundred dollars higher than the two thousand and eighteen budget. With respect to capital, there's two, there's two projects listed to, to be completed in, in the, in the two thousand and nineteen budget, which includes the water flood protection measures of a Birm construction at the water treatment plant and water tower mixing system repair. The, the, the action item did indicate with respect to the two thousand and eighteen OCIF top-up application is not included within this budget. And if, if we are successful with that outcome, then certainly we will bring forward a, a, another recommendation with respect to that. It will have impact moving forward. And with respect to the reserves, the two thousand and nineteen budget estimates to include fifty-two thousand five hundred approximately into reserves after, after capital, after these two capital projects are done.
Through the chair, I was just asking.
Yes.
On your last page, there's a rate increase of one, three by ten percent. Is that a yearly increase per resident or what's that? Like one percent, two ninety-one residential fixed rate increase, is that just a once, a yearly increase of two ninety-one?
Correct. That would be, that would be, that would be the, the annual residential increase.
Yeah, okay. The water rate's the same. This is just an increase in the fixed rate?
That would be, that would be an increase in, 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 in the base rate or fixed charge as, as an alternative.
So, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, go ahead. So, I have a lot of problems here with this, with this one because I can't get a clear picture of the reserves. So, we're talking here in the Cardinal Water Reserve. And the Cardinal Water Reserve, I really don't know where it stands because we were, we were projected to transfer seven thousand eight hundred and twenty in and to take ninety thousand out during two thousand and eighteen. That's what we were projected to do. It's Cardinal Water. And I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the budget twenty eighteen year to actual. When I look at that call, this twenty eighteen year to actual, what it tells me is that we took a draw off that reserve of about thirty-eight thousand and I, I can't understand how that happened because we were to, and it's a kind of a funny presentation if I don't mind. I don't mean to, it just doesn't. You can see from the two calls where the seventy-eight twenty was budgeted to go into reserves, but it wasn't actually put in when I look at year-to-date actual. It comes down a little bit further. And I've got a number of sheets that project our reserves out to two thousand and nineteen. And I don't see how we're handling this reserve account, this water reserve account. And the best that I can come up with is that we've, there seems to be some discrepancy with where that reserve account stands. Where does it stand at the end of two thousand and eighteen? And how much will this budget put into the reserve account? It looks like it's gonna put fifty-two, fifty-two thousand five eighty into the reserve account. Have I got that right?
Through the chair, that is correct. The draft two thousand and nineteen budget proposes to put fifty-two thousand five eighty in the reserves.
Now, if we were gonna put that fifty-two five eighty into reserves at the time that this budget was passed, I would have no problem with that because we did have discussions about when monies go into these reserve accounts and when monies come out of these reserve accounts. We've had lots of discussion around the table about how that happens. But it didn't happen in two thousand and eighteen because I can't see from any of the reserve and reserve fund reports that I've received where seventy-two eighty within, seventy-eight twenty within, or where any amount came out. So, it's because I don't know where we are that I'm hesitating to approve this budget. The other thing that's bothering me is this. We know that we've worked very, very difficult, very hard to get the CIP top-up funding for County Road Two Sewer and Water. We know that it's, what, a three or four million dollar project? And we know that that project is gonna be a hard hit on these reserves, the Cardinal Water and the Cardinal Sewer reserves. So, why we're not making an effort to start building them up now at greater than, at greater than fifty-two eighty, fifty-two five eighty? I don't understand. Because the, the, the budget that we have in front of us, or the recommendation that we have in front of us, I think it's for a one percent increase. Is that right? Am I got that right?
That is, that is incorrect. The, the motion in front would not see any increase.
Okay, so the, the recommendation is that, on my sheet, that committee recommends that council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to adopt the estimates imposed rates for the use of Cardinal Water System? What are, what rates? Impose what rates?
That would be the bylaw that we typically pass.
No, 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 no. What, what rate are we imposing?
Zero.
Zero percent increase.
Correct.
It's the same rate as last year. No increase to the reserve count. Well, it looks like an increase to the reserve count, but.
So, through, through, through the chair, I, I cannot recall the time when we had forecasted to, to transfer fifty-two thousand into reserves for this system.
Your pardon?
I said I cannot recall the time prior that we were forecasting to transfer into reserves fifty-two thousand dollars in year.
Neither can I.
No, which, which the, the feeling is that that's, that's a positive story and that's why we had left it at, at zero. The, the County Road Two project, if it goes forward, we, we certainly know that there is insufficient money in the reserves to cover that project whether, whether we put in a, a twenty-five percent rate increase. But we'll have to look at, at some other options if, if that project goes forward, which, which we kind of knew submitting that. But as one of the alternatives, it's certainly an, an option for, for committee to look at a one percent, three percent, five percent, or ten percent increase to the base rate. That is an alternative.
Well, it's a question of pay now or pay later, and for this system. And when I don't see, in, in the, in the material that I have in front of me, I don't see the estimated two thousand and eighteen balance for that account, that water account, the reserve, that Cardinal Water account. Can we get an update on, on these accounts? Because I, we kind of need to approve this tonight in order to get these rates, to get these rates into the current billing cycle, right?
Correct.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
On this, on your, I guess I'm the, our mayor, I'm a little mixed up on these numbers here. We're putting fifty-seven thousand dollars into reserves and it shows us that at the end of two thousand and eighteen actual, we had six hundred and sixty-five thousand. We're putting fifty-two thousand in, but we're showing the draft budget for two thousand and nineteen, we're still, we only have five hundred and fifty-six thousand. If we're putting fifty-two thousand in, how much are we, we must be drawing a lot of money out of our reserves this year for something early?
So, so through, through the chair, to clarify the reserve balance that we had as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen was fifty-five thousand.
When, when was that as of what?
December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
No, that's not correct. We had what?
Pre-audit. It's pre-audit.
Pre-audit.
I think this, through the chair, I think the discrepancy, discrepancy that the, that mayor says is indicating is that typically each year after audit, I bring forward an action item to the committee with actually transferring to or from the reserves because the reserve policy states that I have to get approval or direction from council to actually physically move the money. So, no money has been moved until audit is finished and we find the final numbers in each of the systems. And when that is determined, I bring forth an item to council to get direction to move the money from the consolidated reserve fund bank account to or from the general reserve. I don't make those changes by budget because it's, it's a direction from council. And I know we've had this discussion many times about how, you know, so I'm physically moving money. I'm not just making a journal entry. I'm physically moving money. So, because of, we budgeted for seventy-eight hundred dollars to go into this account with the two thousand and eighteen budget, we don't always get all of the money projected to receive during, like, we wouldn't get all of that complete money until the end of the year. So, when all the dust settles, we're actually in a deficit according to the budget here of thirty-eight thousand. So, I wait until everything is done before all, all the expenditures are spent and all the revenue is received, and then I bring an action item to the committee for direction to move, physically move the money in or out depending on, on where the system sits.
Oh.
So, your reserve schedule that was provided to you with the township does not have any updates with respect to the in, in, uh, water wastewater? Because tho- those sheets were specific to the township. All it was showing you was the revenue that was received in interest and anything that would have been deposited directly. So, gas tax that would have been deposited directly and RSL dividend that would have been deposited directly to that account. I didn't physically move that money.
But.
Unless I was given directions.
Through the chairs, so where, where we come to a difference of opinion is that the direction to move seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars into the reserve was a budgeted direction. And once the budget was passed, I would have expected an action item to come forward to do that. Then, there was, in, when we discussed the Walker Street project back in May of two thousand and eighteen, we were projecting that we would transfer seven thousand eight hundred and twenty into reserves and estimating that we would transfer ninety thousand dollars out depending on the cost of the water component of the Walker Street project. Now, that would have left us with a balance of four forty-eight in that account starting with a January opening balance of five thirty, five hundred and thirty thousand. And, and I, I believe our actual opening balance on, on January the first, two thousand and eighteen was not five hundred and thirty, but it was five hundred and forty-four. To that, we added, during two thousand and eighteen, we added interest of eleven. But then I, I lose track of where we are because it looks to me like we then took a draw of thirty-eight thousand. Have I got that conceptualized correctly, even if I don't have the numbers? Have I got the right concepts here?
There is a draw at this particular point on the, on the day that I printed that particular report. That is what the deficit is sitting at. That's pre-audit.
That's thirty-eight, four thirty-five.
The auditors have not audited the system.
I understand that.
So, I'm, that is a number that's sitting there, not, not yet confirmed.
Okay, so, conceptually then, we opened with five forty-four. We added interest of eleven. And it looks like we're gonna draw out something like thirty-eight. So, what implications does this budget have for that? Doesn't, it, it does, it does anticipate that there'll be fifty-two thousand go into it again this year, with nothing coming out, right?
That's correct.
Anticipates.
A hundred and five will come, a hundred and five of capital will basically come from revenue generated in the system during the year.
Certainly, part, part of that capital money for the Birm, it would be fifty, fifty percent covered by the National Disaster Mitigation Program.
Yeah, is that shown as revenue on the revenue side?
Yes, it is. It's showing, shown as thirty-seven, five.
It's shown there as thirty-seven, five?
Fifty-eight, forty-one, fourteen.
Okay, so is that a, is that a confirmed grant?
We, we will not have that confirmed until April.
Okay, so are we, are we sure that we're gonna go ahead with the Birm if the grant does not come?
If the grant does not come, I would anticipate that we'll be back with an action item to recommend proceeding with that Birm. I think it's important to, to do.
Okay, so then that takes thirty-seven thousand off the proposed fifty-two thousand that go into reserves.
That is, that is correct, if.
Now, you're, now you don't, you're not putting fifty-two into the reserves. Depending on how those eventualities unfold.
Yes, through, through the chair, no fairness, yes. For, for the information that we have right now, it certainly sounds very favorable that, that funding for the National Disaster Mitigation Program will come through.
Yeah.
We will not have, we won't, we won't have official confirmation until the end.
And you see, I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, the point that I'm trying to make is that to err on the, on the, on the side of the angels here, I think we should have a small increase in this, in this rate in this, on this system.
What would your suggestion be?
Well, my suggestion, uh, I don't know, do we have some alternatives?
We have one, three, five, ten.
Even if it's only one percent, it's, it's an increase. And one only produces six, uh, two thousand dollars. It, it, it increases the, the fixed rate to the resident by two-ninety-one.
Right.
Is that two-ninety-one, that's annually?
Correct.
So even a three percent increase only produces eight-hundred, it, it only costs the resident eight dollars and seventy-two cents. So I, I would, I, I would propose that we should be looking at a three percent increase on that system. It's going to go in, the balance is going to go into the reserves, doesn't matter how you cut the cake.
That's.
And one way or another, from what I'm hearing, that BURM is important, whether we get to thirty-seven or not. But it does mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, and if we don't get that grant, it means you won't be putting uh, fifty-two thousand in, uh, five-hundred-and-eighty in reserves, you'd be putting fifteen thousand. That's correct. As long as we know that. Understand that if that, if that grant does go for a fly. And, and, and the other side, if we're looking at it. Looking at it from the other point of view, if the grant comes through and we do the BURM with the money from the grant, then instead of putting fifty-two thousand into the reserve account, we'll put fifty-two plus eight.
Correct.
Which will be six. So it's not a lot of money, but it's in the right direction in my mind.
Just for clarification, the three percent, the, which is eight-seventy-two, that is an annual fixture?
Through the chair, yes, they are, they are annual.
Counselor?
Well, I think that the way we're talking, talking here, I think the grant's probably likely secured. But I'm not really secure with just putting fifty-two thousand in the reserve because we all know that number two water sewer project has to go soon. Can't be delayed much longer. And I think it's fair to the residents to increase three percent this year and put an extra eight thousand in there, even if it's three years before we get the money to go ahead and do. At least we put a number twenty-four thousand. And I think it's quite obvious to most of us sitting here at the table. It's not going to be a project that's going to be paid for with more own money to do it.
The project you're talking about is the water tower mix-in?
The eight thousand dollars extra might, uh, be a big chunk of the interest paid for there along the way, way that you wouldn't have to do a substantial. It's a lot easier to budget for a two or three percent increase every year than it is to wait five or six years and then all of a sudden be like when Kempfle had, had to put in the new sewage treatment plant back there and all of a sudden their taxes doubled in one year and people were pretty near losing their homes because they couldn't afford the taxes all of a sudden, so.
I remember that. W. Van?
Uh, just being respectful that it's three percent for the water budget and then it'll be another three percent on top of it for the wastewater budget at a minimum. So we're bringing in a two, an eighteen dollars, eighteen dollars and fourteen cent increase on the user of, of the base rate.
Per year?
Per year.
Do you have any data?
No.
Counselor Dillabon?
No.
Mr. Packwood?
Agree with it.
Great, okay. Okay, so we will, uh, do we amend this recommendation?
We can certainly amend.
No motion.
Pardon?
We can amend the motion.
We can amend the motion.
There's no motion.
There is.
Here we go.
Right, okay. Do, all right, help me out here.
I can make the motion.
You can make the motion.
Yes, for three percent.
Three percent increase. Do I have a second here for that? I have a second here. That's Counselor Hunter. Would you like to amend your motion?
Oh, with three percent.
So the, so the recommendation then, the committee recommends that council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to adopt the estimates and impose a three percent rate increase for the users of Cardinal Water, is that how that would read? Okay, I'll call, we, I'll call a question, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? During none? You have a three percent increase. And that brings us to seven D Cardinal Wastewater Budget. And there is also a recommendation on this as well. Open for discussion.
Sure, through the chair.
Go ahead.
The lining of uh, this is the Marjory Street pipelining as part of this discussion, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah?
Project number two?
Yeah. So uh, we just paved Marjory Street, correct? Does that require the digging up of that?
Through, through the chair, no, it does not.
Okay, and was it discussed to be done while it was, while the street was torn apart?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, it was, it was an oversight in the records that that, that that street was not done as part of that realigning in two, in two thousand and eleven. I, I thought it was done.
Okay. So no effect on what's, what's been done recently?
That, that is correct, through the chair, there's no, should be no impact.
And the estimated cost of that is eighty-two thousand?
That is correct.
And in project number one, the cost is fifty thousand, six-eighty-five. And CWWF will cover thirty-eight thousand of that?
That is correct, through the chair, yes.
Of the remaining cost.
Of the remaining cost, that is the, the fourth and final project under that program.
Okay, uh, Counselor Dillabon? Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Well, I got to admit, I did do some more on this account than I did on the water account, so because I, I I'm still not sure where this wastewater account is going to stand at the end of the year. Looks to me that it's going to be something shy of two-hundred thousand. Excuse me, something shy of Cardinal Wastewater, looked at the wrong line. No, I didn't. Yeah, something shy of two-hundred thousand. Not a lot of money, again, when you're, when you're looking at, when you're looking at the at the future.
Mr. Packwood? Counselor Hunter?
I have the reserves accounts in front of me, but it's sitting at two-hundred thousand, we're not in very good shape on that account, so. I think the realignment's a good project, like we did out before, but very efficient and doesn't create much turmoil among anybody, so it's a matter of lock at a time being shut off the water for half a day or something like that.
And it's a nice thing, Lord, is no dig.
No, the whole nation clean and very efficient.
Okay, any other, any other discussions?
So the way that this budget is written right now, the way this recommendation is written right now, it'll transfer to reserves. Well, actually, the way it's written right now, the twenty-nineteen budget estimates include a six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-dollar transfer from reserves. So you're actually going to take money out. And two-hundred and four, what I see on my sheets does not reflect. Well, it looks like, am I reading this sheet correctly? Through the chair, am I reading this sheet correctly? Uh, when I'm looking at the budget sheet, Cardinal Wastewater budget, I'm looking down the column called twenty-eighteen year-to-date actual. Is this telling me that there's a potential to transfer thirty-three, nine, ninety-four into the reserve account?
So through, through, through the chair, you have prior to audit, yes.
Do you understand all the qualifications? Disclaimers. So two-hundred and four, add thirty-three, and then subtract six-thousand-nine-fifty. Tell you where that account should be at the end of December, or at the end of eighteen, no, at the end of nineteen. Well, I don't want to be the only one, I don't want to be the only one that's saying there should be money going into these, or that there should be increases going into these rates. I won't be the only one saying that, so I'm going to refrain from further discussion here.
Any other discussion?
Through the chair, if it wasn't for the Marjory Street lining of eighty-two thousand, would, is it fair to say that that eighty-two thousand would possibly be for reserves? Would we have it left over for reserves? We would be ahead if we weren't doing that eighty-two thousand.
Yes, so, so if you, if you minus the six, sixty-nine, fifty, yeah, the balance would be to reserves.
Right, so putting us over, uh, if we weren't doing that project, putting us over a hundred thousand dollars into reserves. So next year, that number going into the reserves at the present rate would be considerably higher.
Only if you can do any projects right up here.
Correct, if you, if you didn't, if you didn't do project number two, yes, you would be putting approximately seventy, seventy-five thousand in reserves, if I'm not mistaken?
Eighty-two less seven. Eighty-two less seven.
So on our list of upcoming projects for, for next year, is there anything like this on, on that list for next year?
With, with respect specifically to lining, uh, there, there is nothing, there's no additional lines scheduled for lining next year.
Okay, so the recommendation is for adopt a three percent increase to the flat and fixed charge. And number two, direct staff to prepare a bylaw to adopt the estimates and impose rates for the users of the Cardinal water system.
Through, through, through the chair, yes, my, my air, it should say what?
Wastewater.
Correct.
Good, yes, good idea.
Just in going through, one of the, the things that I noticed that's a little different and it might have been easier if it was twenty-seventeen, but going back to chemical and supplies and their expenses, it's, it's budgeted for twelve-five, it's down to, to ninety-eight, seventy-six, and it's budgeted again for twelve-five uh, again this year. Why?
Sure, uh, through, through the chair, uh, so, so for chemicals, it certainly depends on, uh, timing with respect to volume used. It may be that a particular, um, chemical in the process, uh, some of the drums run to be three to four thousand dollars. It may not have been purchased in December of twenty-eighteen, but January twenty-nineteen or February. So there is, there are some times.
So that's not a, not, from my own appearance, that with no twenty-seventeen number, that, that's not a continued number, I expect it to be up closer to the twelve-five this year?
I would, I would anticipate that it would be up closer to the twelve-five.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, you have a recommendation, can I ask for a mover, please? Mr. Packwood, second? We have a mover, we have a second here, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? During none? During. Which brings us to seven E of the Brooks, uh, the two-thousand-and-nineteen low lift budget. And this is the low lift that supplies the water to Greenfield.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And, uh, Mr. Grant, are you speaking for this?
Yes. The, the budget is before you tonight. The, the draft budget was sent to, to Greenfield, uh, in the, in the fall. For comment, no, no concerns were received back. And in front of you tonight is a proposed budget that, that has a one-point-five percent increase to, to the, to the reserve.
Discussion.
Now, I believe, through the chair, go ahead. Now, we're, we're using a number of names here. This one is called the Low Lift Station Budget. I believe the, the reserve fund is called the Raw Water Supply System, is it not?
Through, through the chair, very well, maybe, called the Raw Water.
Okay, so, um, as you notice, this budget, uh, this budget is built in such a way that twenty thousand dollars, Green, Greenfield pays the entire operating cost. And we bill them the twenty thousand dollars to go into a reserve account, and they've been paying that twenty thousand dollars every year. And so the balance in that account at the end of twenty-eighteen should be about three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. But in addition to that, any, if, if we've collected more money in revenue than we've spent in expenses, as this year we're proposing to collect a hundred and three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and spend on expenses a hundred and three-four-eighty-five. So if the two balance out, just the twenty goes into the reserves. But if the expenditures are less than the one-oh-three, the differential also goes into the reserve. So Greenfield's quite happy with this budget. And, uh, they're very happy with the system and the way we've supplied it. And, uh, I mean, in, in May, I think they make their last payment on the, on the debt, so I'm more than prepared to support this budget and get it, get it underway here.
I thought you were going to ask for a presentation.
No, no.
Yes, Counselor Dillabon?
Uh, Mr. Chair, does that mean that, uh, their debt, debts paid, would we still get the twenty grand a year?
Yep. Yep. Continue.
We'll still get the 103.
103,485?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's nice.
Mr. Parkwood?
But that's what costs an operating system.
Councilor Hunter?
No.
Deputy Mayor? And Mr. Mayor, anything else?
No.
All right, we have a, we have a recommendation, can I have, can I have a mover please?
Moved.
Mayor, Mayor Sayo, second, Deputy Mayor Deschamps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie. That brings us to 7F on the agenda, the 2018 annual water reports, CWS and EBS. And I do believe that Mr. Grant still is answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each year, we're, we're required under the regulation to prepare annual reports on our water systems and advise the users of the water system on their availability prior to February 28th. So in front of you tonight are the reports for the Cardinal Water System and the Edwardsburg Distribution System. Prepared, so a motion in front of you is to receive the annual water reports and have the reports posted on the website and notify users via social media and local newspaper on the report availability.
And this, this is not new, this, this comes out quite often, every year.
Correct, it's, it's, it's an annual report.
Are there any, are there any, any deficiencies that we should be concerned about?
Through the chair, the, the system, both systems are, are operating very well.
Good.
No issues.
Good, any questions?
Well, just a good compliment, they did do a good job of looking up the reports.
Comment, same, I think our employees there did an excellent job of looking after it. When you look, I do water parts too, my business, and they're not easy to go a whole year and not have a deficiency someplace along, along the ways. But I think they do a very good track and very good looking after it.
Deputy Mayor, any comments? Mr. Mayor?
No.
And Councilor?
Not this, but maybe getting off a little, but we do have lots of time, let's see, 20 o'clock. We're supposed to take a water safety course or something, and then it was postponed, we're going to get together. Do you remember that?
Yes, you have, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Sayo brought that up. Just at the very beginning, it's, it's been rescheduled, I believe.
Oh, right.
A new date is coming up.
So, so through, through the chair, there, there was a course available on January 16th in Smith Falls, I believe, that.
Through the day.
Through the day, that did, that did not work for, for many of the members of committee. So we will, we will look to schedule in the next couple of months a, a session in the evening to, to have that course conducted here.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had a chance to go over the recommendation, do I have a mover for the recommendation? Deputy Mayor and Mr. Parkwood, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? And we go on to 7G. Okay, the marketing license agreement renewal. And I believe, Mr. Grant, you're going to speak to that. This is the service line, this is the service line contract, which we discussed a few meetings ago. And I believe the gist of this whole thing is that the township does not want to renew the, we'll say, the agreement with the service line contract. They want, they, we want them to go on their own, I believe, that is the, that is the gist of this.
So, so through the chair, just a little quick refresher for, for those that were not on council at the time. Service line warranties of Canada provides, the market agreement provided for, number one, education for those on municipal water and sewer with respect to their responsibilities from the property line to their home in, in the event of, of a sewer backup or, or a water service line break, which, which was an important aspect. But on top of that, they provided an option of insurance coverage. Originally, it was just the city of Hamilton that, that was entered into that agreement with service line warranties. But over, over, over 2015, there were several other locations that entered in. And the initial responses were positive, the concept was, was positive. So the recommendation came to, to committee to, to enter into the agreement. Remembered into the agreement, the, the first portion of the, of 2016. Naturally, receiving, those requests did, did bring some questions. They were handled in combination of, of in-house staff. And things seemed to be heading in the right direction until some, some changes in, in the company, which their mail-in campaign included the majority of the township exclusive of municipal services. Unfortunately, even in certain cases, adjacent locations in the township of Augusta that did receive those, those mail-ins as well. In addition, in, in, in January this year, it, it appears that in late fall of 2018, they had some issues with the Bank of Canada, that their financial institution that they used in, in Canada, which ended up, individuals that, that sent in and mailed in for their, their annual renewal, it, it was sort of returned to sender and some, some past due notices were issued, which naturally the residents were not happy with. My understanding is that that, that has now been corrected. But overall, the, the uptake in, in that insurance and the, the education portion is probably complete. We saw the biggest uptake in 2017 and a reduction actually in 2018. One of, one of the items that I want to mention is that we have received, received word from Service Line Warranties Canada that those that are registered in the program will continue to be able to pay and, and receive that coverage, which was one of our concerns if, if we kind of terminated the, the agreement instead of rolling into an automatic agreement.
So the only difference is that they will be contacting the user directly, not through the township?
Basically, what will be happening is there will be, there will be no more marketing campaigns that will be directly associated with the township.
Good, okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Do we have any idea of the number of users of the system who purchased a policy from service line warranties?
Through, through the, through the chair, I do not have an exact number, because some, some may have purchased the water and sewer coverage at a particular home, and one may have just had coverage on, on, on one of those items. So basically, we just get a royalty on, on those, on those numbers. So we can roughly figure out approximately how many warranty plans are out there, but we don't know, that does not necessarily equate to the number of residents, because they may be covered underwater and sewer in particular places.
So do we know the number of warranties that are out there, total?
Through the, through the chair, we can, we can look basically that we received in 2017, $567. So it's basically, yeah. It is a little difficult because each, each plan is, is a little bit different with respect to that, so. I, I, I would anticipate that you're, we're looking at potentially that, at most 100. I'd have, I'd have to do a little bit more. I mean, we, we, we don't, all, all we do is receive a royalty check.
They don't give us a, a, the service line doesn't give us a breakdown in the year?
Not that I'm aware of, it's just, it's just a check.
Through the chair, it just, does a check that tells us the value, doesn't give us breakdown of any numbers.
So through the chair, the next, the next question. There's a, there's a phrase in here that on page two of two, second paragraph on the, on the page. "We were advised on January 11th that Service Line Warranties Canada had completed their migration of Service Line Warranties Canada customers in late September to a new platform called HomeServe Insurer and that they had encountered an unanticipated delay with HSBC, the financial institution they use in Canada." Now, I have about four questions with that paragraph. "They completed their migration and Service Line Warranties Canada sell the business to Home Serve. So what happened? And who exactly is it that had the problem with HSBC? They had encountered an unanticipated delay with HSBC. Who, who's got the problem with HSBC? Service Line Warranties Canada or the new company called Home Serve Insurer? Or do we know?"
I, I, I cannot, I can't say which, which particular company it is.
Okay, so what they're telling us though, is that the warranties that people have paid for remain in effect, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and if we terminate, if we enact the 98 termination clause, those warranties will remain in effect. And they may continue to solicit warranties, but just not with the township's blessing. Is that the way we're understanding this?
So through, through the chair, that would be correct, but without the use of any township logo or letterhead, that would, would indicate that the township has any false support.
Okay, but the long and the short of it is though, that Service Line Warranties Canada does have our mailing lists.
Service Line Warranties of Canada has the postal codes with, with addresses.
And the address, that's right, okay. It's just that a number of people have talked to me and they think that this is good value and they've bought these policies, they call them warranties, but they're policies.
Correct.
So a number of people are happy to pay the amount of money to protect themselves against frost and freeze-ups and breaks. I'd hate to see the people that are happy with the insurance program lose it. But I don't really see much initiative on the part of the company to pursue their relationship with us in spite of all the difficulties we had with them. I would have thought that there would have been salesmen here pitching increased in, or, you know, mea culpa, mea culpa, and we'd like to continue, but I don't see that happening either. So I'm prepared to accept the recommendation, the staff recommendation to execute or to, to enact the 98 termination clause. I think the sooner you execute on it, the better. Then we'll see whether there's a salesman comes forward and tries to persuade us otherwise.
Councilor Dillabon, did you have something?
Yeah, I, well, you kind of answered it. I, I'm wondering why, why didn't, why we're getting rid of it? Because, geez, I see it, I didn't even know if we, they had this to offer. I think this is a pretty good deal, I mean, the business.
It is, no question about it, especially those of us that have 100-year-old homes.
Well, it's all plumbing, you know, I just don't get why we.
But we're, we're really not doing anything, we were never involved in the first place.
Oh, okay, right.
We just got a royalty fee, that was all.
And you're saying people are happy, you're talking?
Some, some are, yeah.
Oh, yeah, many are.
Yeah, through the chair.
I, I don't really, I mean, I've, I got one of these letters myself, I'm not on water and sewer. When the letter came, it certainly had Edwardsburg Cardinal logo and, and township logo on it. I thought, when I received it, what a joke. The township sending letters out to people who don't even have water and sewer. Upon further investigations, lots of people that didn't have water and sewer received these and thought it was the township sending these out. Once people found out that it wasn't actually the township, it was somebody else using their logo, I think a lot of people were displeased with that. And when they found out that the township had authorized use of their logo, I think they were even more displeased with it. So I have no issue with canceling this. If people want the private insurance, the company's still there, they can buy that private insurance still. It just removes our logo, our letterhead, and our reputation from their company. And for $406 last year, I really don't think it's worth our reputation or to our people.
That's, that was a, a black mark.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Also, as I said, the letters went out to a lot of people that didn't have water and sewer. And I, not being a council at the time, but having been on, I had people approach me and my country, older people, that thought this was an order to ban by the township that they had to take this coverage out. I didn't understand the letter, and I thought, so this is something, now I've got to pay another $120 a year, or I got a septic system in my dad's car. And everyone said, well, this would be great if I could pay $67 a year, my septic system's just about done, and I go build my own.
It does, it does pay for all drains though, they're saying, so if you do have a backup, even if, if you are on septic, they're, they're saying that they're going to cover you.
Yeah, but that wasn't the exact story, someone got from the salesman.
Well, I don't know, but I mean, this is what I'm reading here, that's what I thought was a good deal. $67 a year, I mean, you go to your insurance company for sewer backup, you're going to pay more than $67, I'm going to tell you that.
I, I think the people that are on septic should approach them, see if there is a policy more than.
Well, it, it, I mean, it's saying all, all drainage, it's not just saying your sewer, I mean, your.
Well, I think it clarifies it somewhere in there.
And it's funny, I never got a letter.
They even got them down Matilda Township, so I mean, yeah.
Is that right, with our letter? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, is that right?
Okay, do we have a, can I have a mover for the recommendation? Councilor, sorry, Deputy Mayor, do I have a second here? Councilor Hunter, the recommendation, you had a chance to read it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie? Which brings us now to 7H, the 2019 free budget approval, selected capital items. There's four of them, and they are mixed. And Mr. Grant, would you like to clarify this for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So we're, we're looking to, to get approval to, to, to either tender or, or order a particular unit, so, so the chiller unit would be the eight to 10-week lag time in delivery. So if we can, if we can get that ordered and purchased, it'll be ready for, for installation during the downtime of the, of the arena over the, over the summer, so it's ready for startup back in, in August. The other item, the other items like hot mix reservicing, we found earlier, we can get those tenders out. Usually receive better pricing. And the same with the, with the Smithfield Culver. With the potential for a, for that pipe to collapse, it would be far better to be able to get that tendered and at least have the material on site. There, there is certainly a lag time to, to get that type of incisor piping. And the, the tandem axle plow is. And the tandem axle plow as well, we're looking at it. In the best case, forty to fifty-two week delivery time. So, if we can get that tendered, we should have those prices backed and, and to committee in advance of, of the budget being, being passed. We have a better idea of what those, what those particular costs will be.
Questions available?
Yes, who's preparing the tender documents?
So, for the hot mix resurfacing, we've, we've been preparing that in-house over the last few years. Our superintendent will be preparing the tandem axle plow truck. And Smithrow Culvert, we will most likely have an engineering firm that will need to do some of the design and survey work, that they'll, they'll prepare that tender.
Can we, can we utilize South Nation Conservation on that? They've got all the engineers in-house. They've got, they, they, they do this kind of work?
Certainly, as part of the, of that process with the Smithrow Culvert, we're, we're in consultation with South Nation.
Thank you.
Who's doing the tender for the chiller unit?
The, the chiller unit will be sole sourced, correct?
May I burn?
I said the chiller unit will be sole sourced to Simcoe Refrigeration.
I have a real problem with that. I have a real problem with that. That's a hundred and ten thousand dollars sole sourcing. Did come in at one twenty-five, wasn't it? You brought it for Mike?
One ten.
One ten.
Sorry?
Through the chair, one ten.
But was it, it was always one ten, I thought. Oh, was it? Okay. I thought it was higher.
Through, through the chair or, or arena facility director, I don't believe there is another source, is there other than company?
Other than, sorry?
Other than the one we deal with all the.
Well, currently we, currently our, we have a service agreement with Simcoe Refrigeration for both plants and, and we have had that agreement in place for the last ten years. They've been the only ones that have worked on, on the, the facilities. When we installed, or when we purchased, when we built the new ring, the ingredient center, part of the, the package that was put out for tender was that the sourcing would go through Simcoe Refrigeration as well. So, that was part of the, of the preliminary documents. Three years ago, we replaced the header trench over here at the Spencerville Arena and that also was sole sourced to Simcoe Refrigeration. There is one other company that is out there, that'd be McDonald Black or Black McDonald. They do refrigeration work. But Simcoe Refrigeration has about eighty-five percent of the arenas in eastern Ontario.
Through the chair. Okay, so, I think we're getting confused between apples and oranges here. The equipment itself is a piece of equipment. I don't know what the, the hundred and ten thousand is purchase and installation. So, installation, I understand that we have some sort of a relationship, I'm not sure what it is, with Simcoe Refrigeration, which performs the work. But I don't know that they have an ongoing right to always supply the equipment because they're just sourcing the equipment from someplace else unless they're manufacturers. I didn't think they were manufacturers. I thought that they were a service company. So, I don't understand why we wouldn't be tendering the equipment as one issue and then if we have to use Simcoe to install it, that's a different story. It's just a piece of equipment that's manufactured and I cannot believe that there's only one manufacturer and that it's Simcoe. That's why I want to know, who's preparing the tender? We may find out that whoever manufactures this piece of equipment is prepared to install it as well as, as, as supplying it.
So, through, through the chair, at this stage, it was, it was not going to be tendered, it was going to be sole sourced.
But that's not embedded in rabbit?
Not until this recommendation is passed. I don't have any problem proceeding with the first three capital projects, but I would, if I was moving the recommendation, I would be removing the chiller unit unless it was going to be tendered as well.
Duncan, go ahead.
I, I actually echo those comments. I, I still, in my, my budget notes, I still have some concerns with, with the purchase and installation of, of the, of the chiller unit on its own. So, if it's, if it's removed from that discussion and discuss it further on its own, I'm fine. The first three, I'm totally fine with the, the chiller unit on its own.
I see. Counselor?
Recreation director, again, who does manufacture the unit?
I don't have the actual name on hand with me this evening.
But it's not manufactured by Simcoe?
It's not manufactured by Simcoe. Either was the header trench that we did two years ago that was sole sourced to Simcoe Refrigeration and that was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Packwood?
I'm good with the first three.
Counselor Doleba?
Well, Simcoe has been around. They do give us good service. And I tell you, if you get a compressor down on a Friday night, I don't care who, get to bring this chiller in, another company, but I don't think you get the service to come here to this arena and fix it. So, I think we should really look hard at that because they have been around. I, I don't know about eighty, I think they probably have ninety percent of the arenas in the country. Just from the experience over the years of seeing them from ring to ring. And I don't know how long they've been in business, but they, 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 they give us good services, all right?
That is correct. We've been, we've had them in our facility for the last twenty years.
In Spencerville?
Spencerville and in Cardinal. They were, even with the, when Cardinal Community Center was run by the board, it was Simcoe Refrigeration that did the, the contracts or.
That's my problem. And when you start tendering out equipment, I'm sure Simcoe are not going to be, well, I know right now they're not going to give you the best deal of installing someone else's equipment because they're not making America. So, I, I'm just a little blurry about switching off on getting somebody like that. I don't even know how many companies do it. I thought there was one in Cornwall too. You said Blackwood and McDonald. I thought there's another company in Cornwall that does refrigeration on arenas, but I could be wrong. There's not a lot, there's not a lot of companies, I'll tell you that, in the country. That's my opinion.
I don't know, I've got a little, we might save a few dollars by tendering. I don't doubt that one iota, but you might save some, because somebody's going to underbid to try to get into, into arenas, they're a small company going to try to get in. I agree with Counselor Doleba. We've been with this company for a long time and they provide us good service. And if we go to another company, Simcoe's always been good. I don't think they've ever run over their schedule getting in that we failed to open an arena on time. We save ten thousand dollars in equipment, pay five thousand dollars more for installation and it's, they don't deliver on time, but it's monthly getting to us. I'm just, I, we haven't been in business, I like to stick with the one I, dealership I know and who I'm dealing, dealing with.
On a case like this, this isn't, it's not a light bulb.
This is a time-sensitive thing, I need delivery, so. I'm still in favor of going ahead with sole sourcing of food.
And I also am in favor of sole sourcing as well, on this, on this particular item, just simply because of the, I know the service that Simcoe give us and I was involved with Simcoe through the community center board and they've, they've always, always been there when we needed them and they've always been top notch. So, I would, I would, I would support the sole sourcing myself. So, we have a recommendation. Do I have a mover for the recommendation?
Aye, so move.
Do we have a second or? I'll go for a second. Mr. Packwood, mover and a second or? All in favor? Aye. Four. Gary, opposed?
Opposed to Vinnie.
Vinnie, so sorry. Okay, moving on. So, we are now at seven aye, which is another department. David, I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll appreciate the, this is the, this is the fire, fourth quarter fire report and Chief Moore, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will give Dave an opportunity to cover this one too if he so desires. I'm sure you've all reviewed my report. I will just highlight the, the totals at the bottom of page one. The total calls in twenty eighteen, we had two hundred and five. Over twenty seventeen is a hundred and eighty-three. And the significant quarter, it was quarter three with twenty-one fire slash smoke incidents. Seemed to have a lot of car fires last summer. And page two, it's pretty straightforward, just with our, an update of the ongoing efforts of the fire department and I'm happy to answer any questions that committee has.
I, I just have a couple. Under activity, you have firefighter associate hosted their annual turkey bingo. Mr. Moore, is that, is that a fundraiser for you?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. And the fire losses, we have a hundred and fifty thousand, the house on Blair Road. Do we have anything on the house on Adelaide Street? That was in two thousand and eighteen, I do believe.
Anything as far as?
Well, to, to costs of, costs of the, the fire loss.
Oh, I'm sorry, that would have been in, in that quarter's report?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, okay, this is, okay, this is not a, all right. Okay, so this is just monthly, or this quarter, I should say.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I, I was thinking that it was for the entire year. That's all I have. Any other questions? Counselor?
Through the chair, to the chief. During the year twenty eighteen, how many structural fires did we have, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't, I don't have that number broken down specifically. I'd probably guess six, just off the top of my head.
Largest one you had back in Highland Road, you have seven fires?
I would say the Miller Road fire, yes.
What was the other thirty-three? Cars?
No, he's asking about structural fires.
I realize that. We had a total of thirty-nine fires. And if you're saying you had six structural fires, that leaves us thirty-three, so what was other thirty-three? Car fires?
Car fires, snowmobiles, four-wheeler, anything else.
Yeah. So, really, our MVC and our medical is running probably about seventy percent in over actual fire, right?
Correct.
And our counsel, or not counsel, but assistant not required. Geez, we got twenty-seven now. What's that? Did we come, did we start rolling? Those twenty-seven, like, we got the page, went to the fire hall, did we start rolling?
Yes, sir.
We got sent home twenty-seven times?
Yes, sir.
Why, why's that though? Is that because of mutual aid? Is that because of the 401? You didn't need like a car in the ditch and no injuries, things like that, or?
Through the chair, that's correct. It could be a medical call where EMS is on scene out of us and they say we're not required. Could be the OPP on scene in an accident saying we're not required.
So, when they call nine-one-one, they're calling fire and ambulance, is that right, as a rule, and police?
Depending on the information that the call taker receives.
Seems like a lot, twenty-seven sent home.
Seems like we need better dispatching.
Sorry?
Seems like we need better dispatching.
Well, no, it can't, I mean, if the nine-one-one comes in, I, I realize I can say, yeah, do you got you, you need a fire, ambulance and police and, you know, the trends with you.
People, some people just don't know what's going to happen.
No, no. But I see our, our, our medical and our MVC though, I mean, motor vehicle collisions, that seems to be the norm now in all fire departments, is that right? In our area, is medical assist.
Through the chair, I, I would agree that medical assist on motor vehicle accidents would be a majority of most fire departments in the area.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you very much. The, the staffing, are you, are your staffing levels where you expect them to be?
Through the chair, we, we recently took on some more, some more recruits. So, our staffing levels are, are coming along very well.
What does that mean?
I'm happy with our staffing level, especially in the Cardinal station.
What are you running out here, thirty-five? Twenty-five?
I think we're about twenty-nine at station one.
What do you in Cardinal?
Now you're putting me on the spot. I, I think with our, our latest, our latest recruitment, we will be in around the twenty-one mark.
So, you would like twenty-five in Cardinal? Be a, a good number?
Be quite happy with that.
Anything else, Counselor?
Mine's a question that may be for another time or another, another meeting, but it, it's, it's in reference to the ship, the St. Clair, this weekend that burnt. Did you, did you see that?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
On the air, I remember. So, it was, it was a ship that was at dock and a couple of the containers overheated and it caused the, the ship to catch on fire. And I, so I read through and, read through the article to, to see exactly what happened. And they had no hydrant service there, or they did, ten of them, six of which were frozen and, and only four of which actually worked. And they weren't able to keep up with, with the spraying. So, I'm kind of curious if, if we have a system, you know, I know we have the, the, that's what they used, the, they filled the pumper truck, the pumper truck came in, put it in the thing and then they, they kept spraying. Do we, we have a, will that keep up if we have a fire at, at the port on a ship?
Through the chair, the, the port have their own, their own fire pump onsite, which would, which would supply water for us.
And winter's not really an issue for us because there's nothing there for the winters.
But the larger question is, do we not have the capability to draw from the river directly into a pumper and onto a fire?
Through the chair, with, with proper access, yes, we, we do that routinely.
Yeah. So, as long, so as long as, you're talking about the fire on a ship at the port, would, would there be no ice, we would be able to handle that, with, at least with water?
Given access to the water, yes, we, we would have no issue with water supply.
I don't understand your qualification there, given access to the water.
Through the chair, we, we have to be able to get the truck close enough to the water that our hard suction reaches to a sufficient depth that we can, we can draw the water.
Okay, so there's a, there's a limitation to the draw? Okay, all right.
Yes, because we, we use hard, hard suction hose to draw the water from the river, so we're limited.
I see. Now I understand the qualification. Thank you.
Sorry, just off topic, I just, was just curious. Sorry, just off topic, I just, was just curious.
Through the, through the chair, to, hello, we're talking about ships here. Do we really train for responsibility for this? Like, we're not going to be sending firefighters into a lake or to try and put a fire out on a ship? I don't think that's our responsibility for that, is it?
Nine-one-one.
Yeah, but you've got to be, it's your level of service that you provide.
Through the chair, we do have some fittings that were given to us a long time ago that we can connect to the, to the ship and, and supply them with water. We would obviously support their efforts, and we have done a couple of tours over the years of, of ships to get a bit of familiarity with, with the layout and the challenges involved in that kind of ship.
They could have other things on the ship, chlorine leak, whatever, different, where you're going to get called upon.
I had one of my best dinners there. Provide marine service, so, have to take the cost, and start advertising, use, provide marine service firefighting, so. As long as the ship's next to the dock and rescue, that's one thing, but if it catches fire two hundred yards deep in the water, we don't want to be, expect that we're going to be fighting a fire though, so. No.
Mr. Packwood, you have anything to, to add? Okay, that's an information item. Thank you, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. But don't go away, you're not, you're not done yet. That brings us to seven J, which is the MTO calls. And Chief Moore is going to speak to this as well, and I think let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was a, a report that started last year, and committee requested to get it, I think, twice a year. So this would be, I guess, our second kick at the can, which gives a summary of 2018. I do provide a bit of a background for committee members that maybe aren't, aren't familiar with the billing that we do on MTO, or for MTO. She just has a summary, on Highway 401, we responded sixteen times. Five of those responses were eligible to be paid. And they were all paid. For sixteen, we responded twenty-two times, submitted all twenty-two. Ten were eligible, and so far, we've been paid for eight, with two pending. One has been approved payment, and we're still working through the, the last one. Total invoices in 2018, forty-one thousand, two sixty-eight. And to date, received is thirty-seven, four fifty-two.
So, my question is, the one column says submitted. So, we do submit even when we're not eligible, is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And I hope this is not a new report, because I'm, I'm hoping that we've got statistics that will cover a four or five-year period. The point being that even on this report, just, I'm just looking at Highway 401, we're responding sixteen times, submitting sixteen invoices, and being only paid for five. And my point is, to the minister and anybody else who will listen, we performed a service.
That's right.
We've sent out our men and our equipment, and they, they got waved off. And so they were declared an ineligible trip, but we still performed our service. And I'm hoping at some point that this gets brought back up to a more political level where we can deal with it with some good statistics behind us. I think it's, I think it's not really right that our volunteer fire departments should be responding to these calls in good faith and not being paid. I don't care whether we did anything or not, we were there.
Just for my own clarification, the very last, very last sentence on the page one, call of note, January twelfth, 2018, multi-transport accident with chemicals, is that fourteen thousand dollars that we were paid?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
With the chair, how come we're not getting, how come we're in algebra or whatever? Like you said, there's sixteen and five, so that's eleven we didn't get paid. Like, why, why aren't we getting those out of the eleven? It's not stand downs, is it? Out of those sixteen?
Through, through the chair, we, we need to perform a, a service to get paid. So, so we need to put out a fire, or we need to do extrication, or we need to do something with a spill or a cleanup in order to get paid.
Well, if you, if you did traffic?
Doesn't, doesn't count.
Oh, it's got to be something done. And, and who's this, MTO? Is this under the MTO that pays?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's, that's a no-no.
Well, and just for the benefit, just for the benefit of, of counsel, I mean, at one time, this goes back more than twelve years, we got paid for every call. And the MTO paid us, and the calls where there was an insurance company involved, MTO would then subrogate back to that insurance company and collect from the insurance company. At some point along the line, they started saying, well, unless we have an insurance company to collect from, we're not going to pay you. So, what that meant was, and by the way, the difference was paid by the Ontario taxpayer. So what they did is they eliminated that line item from their budget, so that the only ones that were getting paid for is where there was enough of a incident, that there was an incident report, where there was an insurance company identified. So if we were just arrived on the scene and then got waved off by the police, they will not pay us. Now, I mean, I sat face to face with the minister, and she told me, take out a fire extinguisher and spray the engine compartment, disconnect the battery cables. I don't care what you do, you have to do something in order to get paid. But my point is, we did perform a service. Our vehicles and our men left our stations and attended at your scene. And that was the service that we provided.
And put themselves in danger.
And doing, yeah. Anyway, it's a philosophical thing, and it's a political thing.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I noticed, I'm sure Chief can tell the net, likely to name, but I forget the township of four seventeen there, I think it is, there that put a, passed a bylaw that any time their fire trucks rolled for an accident, even if they provided just backup service for the record, a pull-in traffic control, if it wasn't a township resident, they billed the insurance company for, for traffic control. There was going to be a flat rate charge for, when I forget which township, it was on the news, quite a bit on the news there, two or three nights, about them, on a charge of, it was a resident and they went out, there wasn't a charge for it, it was a non-resident of the township, and their trucks responded. They got billed so much, and they passed a bylaw, there'd be a charge, and it was, they collected the information, the insurance name of the car, and they sent the bill, they didn't go to MTO, they sent it straight to the church company, and it was in their bylaw that that was a charge, so.
Wonder how successful they are.
Well, all municipalities have the right of going one way or the other. If your municipality decides to go through the MTO, you invoice to the MTO. If you decide that you're going to go directly to the insurance company, then you go directly to the insurance company. But you have to go one way or the other. Wait, this is what I'm told. You either take advantage of the MTO service, or you deal with the insurance companies on your own. Now, you could say that on this report tells us that we got paid for five, we didn't get paid for eleven, but those eleven we wouldn't have got paid for even if we had gone the other way, because maybe there was no vehicle there, and maybe there was nobody to get an insurance card from. And plus the fact that it creates all kinds of additional paperwork at the scene if we're going to bill insurance companies directly. So that's what I'm told, you go with either MTO, or you go with the insurance industry, but you can't go back and forth, that's what I'm told.
And I don't think the OPP would voluntarily give you the insurance company.
Well, you can get the insurance name for any accident from the OPP, you can submit to ask for incident report, to get it to you, freedom of information, so.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that information item. Which moves us on to seven K, fourth quarter facilities maintenance report update. And Mr. Spencer, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Below you will find fourth quarter brief maintenance report for some of our facilities. This is for October, November, and December of 2018. Just, I'll highlight a couple. The South Center, we've installed timers on the outside washroom doors now, so that they will lock on their own at certain times that we have it programmed. And we've had some issues with vandalism there during the ball season, so now they will be locked each night at, at nine o'clock, or ten o'clock, depending on what's there. And we can do those remotely from off-site. So if we know there's a tournament on later, then we can program them to stay open longer and then locked up. So, we've added those there. We've also added them at the washrooms at the Cardinal Legion, where our canteen is. Because normally, on weekends, the canteen doesn't open till, say, eleven o'clock. There's lots of people walking in the mornings now, so now we'll have them programmed that they'll open and close at the, at certain times. So, that'll be good. Ingredion, just indicating health inspections were done in December, and there were no issues in the canteen or in the facility itself. They did their Olympia test for carbon monoxide, and there were no issues there. Pivotech doors, as you are aware, the Zamboni door was damaged, and so that has been installed and is working fine. Spencer Arena, same with the health inspection. We did have a problem with the overhead door. A pivotech door was called in and one of the pulleys was broken. That was, meant that there was one night of ice rentals that had to be canceled to order the part in. And then we also had some issues with our Zamboni, as you are aware as well. And parts were ordered, and we were able to utilize the, the services at the Prescott Arenas of Zamboni during that time, so it was good there. That's basically it, unless there's any questions regarding that.
Any questions for Mr. Spencer? Counselor?
For our staff and our, our canteen, have they all received their food space handlers' certificate?
They're not required based on the health, health requirements. We don't have to show any proof of that. They just go through training through our supervisor, with our supervisor. But because they're not actually preparing the food, it's all stuff that's already pre-cooked for as far as the deep, the deep fryer and what have you. So, we've never been approached by the health department to indicate that those type of qualifications were required.
I think you better be pretty careful, because I just renewed, renewed mine, and now there has to be somebody holding that certificate on site at any time if there's food being served, so.
I can certainly check with the health department, I don't have a problem with that. But that's certainly nothing that has come up with, with Joyce, with the health department.
We have open pair of hot dogs in the oven, or some stuff there, and french fries. Any food that can do?
We have certain requirements as far as cleaning the utensils and everything at the end of the night, and we have all that in place, but we've, we've never been approached for that, that sort of certification.
Certification changed on July first, everybody.
We just had the.
One certified, two, their certificate on site.
Both arenas were inspected in December by the health, the health inspector. And there was no notification at that time that, that was required.
They asked for a certificate, and I haven't got it, so three hundred and five dollar fine, so.
I'll look into it.
Deputy Mayor?
For Ingredion Center, November mid-season inspection by Simcoe or refrigeration, I don't see that for Spencerville. Do we do it in Spencerville?
Yes, it was, and then I would just, was not put in by air.
Were there any issues or anything that needed to be replaced?
Uh, no.
And what was their, their overall inspection, said that the equipment was good?
Yep.
So, so the, on the last page there, the, the Prescott Zamboni machine, did, did we pay the movement back and forth?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so, did they charge us rentals?
No, they did not.
And, and the machine went back to Prescott?
Yes, that is correct.
Mike, can I just ask a question regarding that? Why wouldn't we pick that up ourselves?
With what?
The Zamboni from Prescott.
But we don't have a trailer, a trailer that would, would hold that.
You mean a, you mean the trailer we bought many, many years ago, the blue trailer? I thought we bought it because that's why we wanted.
No, we bought that trailer to move our Kubota lawn tractors around, at the time when, before we started contracting it.
So that trailer will not hold the?
I don't know if it would, but I mean, I know.
I seem to think we transferred equipment between Cardinal and Spencerville on the.
Equipment.
Lawn tractors, Zambonis.
No.
No?
No, anytime we've had an issue, if we've had one breakdown in the summer or the spring, if, if we had a problem last year in Cardinal, and we floated ours down, we obtained a, a tow truck company, and, and they floated it down for the hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, that's how we do it?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Dillaw, do you have any questions?
So I've just got a couple, Mr. Spencer. The, you're putting door locks on the washroom in there, at the South Center for vandalism. Are we going to be renovating those outdoors this year?
They will be renovated and ready to go before they're open in the spring.
And number two, Pebble, Pebbletech doors, are they from Ottawa?
Um, just back of Winchester.
Is there any reason why we're not using someone local like Seaway Doors?
Seaway Doors do not, Jeff used to be the one, through the chair, sorry. Seaway Doors, Jeff Lawshway, they were the ones that always maintained the, the maintenance on the overhead door in Spencerville here. And the operator that was working with Seaway Doors left last year. So Jeff is not, doesn't have any, anyone qualified to, to work on that door now. So that's why we don't use Seaway Door. They were first approached when we had the problem in December, and Jeff said that he's not able to supply the maintenance for that door anymore. So that's why we had to go to Pivotech Doors.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, any other questions? Or Mr. Spencer, not? Then we'll move along. And we're now at seven L, and that is the fourth quarter facilities stats report update. Mr. Spencer, do you have anything to highlight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm just indicating, obviously with the Prescott Arena, our, our prime time numbers are, are near capacity. The fourth quarter report indicates that the first three months are for facilities other than the arenas, and it just shows the meeting rooms and the, the foul hall and the council chambers. And then on page two, it breaks down the arena for the Ingredion Center in Spencerville. And as you will see, based on the percentage for two eighteen over to two seventeen, they were increases. And then I did a quarter to quarter comparison from two eighteen to two seventeen, and you'll see that there was an increase on all, at all levels. As far as the prime time ice, we really, I mean, there's one night that we go to ten-thirty as opposed to eleven o'clock at one of the arenas here in Spencsville on Tuesday nights. So that's why it's not at a hundred percent prime time. But primarily, we're from four-thirty till eleven o'clock every night. And then Saturdays and Sundays, we start at seven AM, and we go to eleven o'clock at night at both arenas. So, we are maxed out for prime time ice. And utilized, all user groups are able to get the ice that they're looking for.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spencer?
So the long and the short of it is, is that all of the groups are being accommodated in spite of the loss of the Prescott Arena?
At this current time, there might be, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, there might be a couple men's league teams that played in Prescott that are using, that have obtained some ice at Oxford's Park. The only ones that I know of. And then I know the figure skating group, they, some of the kids came out here. And then I know the figure skating group, they, some of the kids came out here, and some of them went to Brockville, and some went to Morseburg. It's something with the figure skating group that I've tried over the last four or five years to get them, prior to the, the issues with Prescott, to get them to merge together anyways, because figure skating numbers are low. But they were the only ones that we couldn't accommodate right up at the front, the figure skating group.
Mr. Chair, I think just to comment there, too, it was unfortunate Prescott Arena closed up, and everybody was in rush mode there for a week or two trying to realign ice and stuff, and I think our facility manager did a pretty excellent job in, in negotiating with, wouldn't say dissatisfied customers that we had, but not pleased maybe at the rice times being changed around a little bit, but he managed to, everybody seems to be pretty smooth operating there now. I think we're at Spencerville Arena's ready to peak over capacity as far as accommodating the people that are using it right now, and they're certainly doing a great job at keeping it cleaned up as good as they can for the amount of people that are coming through there on Saturday and Sunday. I know we're pretty busy on a Monday catching up, but I've heard various comments from people in, in there from the Ottawa area, it's been in there, about the King's comment, how crowded it was, but yet how clean it was, so I think they deserve, guys and girls, deserve credit for that, so.
I'll pass that along to my staff. If I may say one thing, month to month, it is a bit of a challenge, still is a challenge, but what I will say is that the, the users that are using the facilities work with each other and work with me, so if there's an association that knows in two weeks' time that there's a two-hour slot they're not going to be able to use, then it gets, kind of gets broadcasted out. So there is a lot of jockeying with the invoices at the end of each month, but it's all worth it because everyone's getting the ice that they require. Just a little bit more work in the back, so.
Good. Thank you very much.
My, my only comment would be it's wonderful to see both of our great facilities being used at prime time, ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent efficiency. That's, that's awesome use of recreation facilities. That's great.
Sure.
Any else?
Just hoping you can do something, Mr. Spencer, with that one door in the dressing room there. I don't know what happened. It looks like it was in a car accident. Somebody took a, I don't know what they took, a...
A hatchet.
Must have heaved or shifted, and they...
Referee room.
I have no idea how that, have you seen that?
You're talking over here?
Yeah. Hope we can maybe, actually, the only reason I noticed a young lad when my grandson was figure skating, fell, and he hit his, put his hand there, and I thought he got a sliver. That's when I looked at it, and I said to John that night, should tell you that we should do something if we can't get that rectified, or paint it or something, paint it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Spencer, for that report. Brings us to seven K on the agenda, fourth quarter operations report, and I believe we're back to Mr. Grant, if he has anything to highlight on this.
Mr. Chair, it appears we've came full circle. I guess under section one, with the, with public works, I'll just highlight a couple items. Sixteen winter event responses in the fourth quarter of two thousand and eighteen. We removed about thirty-five to fifty truckloads of, of snow from, from Cardinal and Spencerville. And just under miscellaneous items, we, we replaced seventy-five to eighty-five traffic signs on various roads. That's part of our, of our program. I guess I'll ask if there are any questions on section one before we move on to section two.
I just, I just have one comment that was, that was forwarded to me regarding the piles of snow. I see at the corner of Dundas and, and Bridge Street where the, the area, the open area is, we're piling, we have a mountain of snow in there, and it was mentioned to me that by some people that walk by there on a regular basis, they're going to be looking at that until July. Is there any reason why we have to put snow there? Can we, can we not? I think it is a bit of a, bit of an eyesore. It's, it's not a traffic hazard. I did check that out, because you can see around it. No, it's back, back far enough, but it is a bit of an eyesore, being right there in the, right there in the middle, almost the middle of the village.
So, so through the, through the chair, no doubt with the winter that we've seen, we, we have snow piled in, in locations that we typically do not have snow piled. We're finally receiving a little bit of a break. Crews are working at cleaning up some of those areas, so certainly as of now, that's still there, but certainly for all intents and purposes, it will be cleaned up as soon as we, we can get to it.
I will forward that on, thank you. Mr. Backwood?
I noticed you put forty-five tons of cold patch down. Do we keep a paper trail where the crews, where they put this stuff down? Like, we know we're in the pothole season, and due diligence, do we keep a...
Through, through the chair, there, there is typically a record of, of where, where those pothole repairs are taking place. I can certainly advise at, at this stage with the winter that we've had, we, we will have an abundance of potholes. We probably are starting to get an abundance of potholes forming already, and I don't anticipate that to go away anytime soon.
Have we ever done an analysis where, instead of using cold patch, where, where, like, rockfill interlocks, those small notable areas that are over and over, over again an issue, so to solve the, the problem in the meantime, they do a quick cutout, they hire somebody, they actually have guys on, on staff that are interlock people, and they , they put a quick interlock in and fixes it for the winter until the patch in the, in the spring can be applied, and it seems to set them ahead in their, their service. Have we ever done an analysis to see if the, the difference in cost?
So, so through, through the chair, that, that type of technique works well on low-speed roads. However, on the, on the higher-speed roads, it's, it's not an effective mechanism. So it's, it's certainly something that we could, we could investigate, but at, at this stage, we don't have the, the in-house expertise, so to speak, of, of, of interlock, so we would have to bring in a contractor and to, to sort of prep and make those repairs. So it would definitely be, at this stage, on an initial glance, I would say it would be most effective, the cold patch, and then on those bigger areas, once, after you get into warmer weather, to, to, to use some hot mix.
Counselor?
Mr. Chair, have we, I know we might have talked about it a few years ago, have we ever looked into it anymore, but it's not feasible in the wintertime, there's not much of access around here, but during the spring and later in the summer on these potholes, using a hot box mix to fill these instead of cold patch?
Through, through the chair, that's certainly a consideration. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that the county has purchased a hot box, so it will certainly be attacking the county to see the availability of, of that as a, potentially as a trial at some point later on this year.
Certainly stays in better.
Maybe try it for the summer. Don't think you're going to hard time getting it away from them.
Through, through the chair, I, I anticipate that we will have some difficulty getting, getting it away from them. Potentially, we can see, potentially a few days where they, they may be in the area that we can, we can monitor, watch, and...
So I don't know whether I'm asking the director of operations here, or whether I should have asked the director of facilities, but in the fall program, I was anticipating that we were going to be doing some prep work to get the shoreline fixtures ready for the dock that South Nation is going to be supplying in the spring to go down near the Legion Canteen or the Old Lions Canteen. Did that, did those shore fixtures ever get installed in the fall, at, at this facilities?
I'll defer to Mr. Spencer, you to the chair. Yeah, in late December, South Nation did some work there. You'll see there's a couple pylons there, they, they poured some piles there right now, so that it's in the process of, of being started by something.
So they put it in themselves?
Yeah, not yet, that's correct.
They burned it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the dock itself is, is, is being manufactured right now as well.
Any other, any other questions for the first part of Mr. Grant's, for you?
Hey, Mr. Chair, just a quick overview of the, of the weight transfer site. Over the last quarter, we had two hundred and twelve vehicles over those thirteen Saturdays. Breakdown of the, of the punch card sales, and also, as part of this quarter, we did our fall leaf and brush pickup in, in Cardinal, Johnstown, and new lecture in Spencerville. There are no questions on that part. I'll move to section three, which is our environmental section with respect to our operations of the, of the water treatment plant, industrial park system, wastewater treatment plant, lagoons, Ola Pumping Station, and all systems are, are functioning as designed. So I will certainly entertain any questions after we have that.
So, first question, of course, any problems with the Prisbian draw?
Through, through the chair, that, we've, we've been monitoring that monthly, and the, the flows are consistent. We haven't had any spikes.
Okay, and are we still well within our limitation for Prescott?
Through the chair, yes, yes, we are well within that limitation.
We're getting good history built up there.
That is correct.
I'll start with Mr. Backwood, any, any comments?
I just have one question under the Cardinal Water Treatment Plant. So we come in October there, we had maximum draw there up to ten ninety-one, and other ones are eight thirty-nine and seven eighty-six?
Through the, through the chair, I, I anticipate that that was one of the water breaks that we, that we had.
All right.
Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Mayor, anything else? Counselor Dillawong?
I'm good.
Okay. And thank you, thank you, David, for that, or I should say, Mr. Director, for that. Which brings us to seven K, the Johnstown Commercial Truck Issue, which is a Giant Tiger and MTO problem, and Mr. Grant, could you give us some highlights on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we've received some complaints regarding some of the tractor trailers heading to the Giant Tiger Distribution Center, ending up coming to the intersection of number two and sixteen, and turning left instead of right, and into the Johnstown subdivision, and having some trouble naturally maneuvering around that subdivision to get themselves back out. Initially, we, we approached MTO with respect to placing a, a sign sort of at, beneath the Johnstown sign that currently exists on Highway sixteen, sort of indicating Giant Tiger Distribution Center, and an arrow pointing to the, to the west. To date, we have not had much success with dealing with MTO. Basically, they have refused to give us permission to erect one of those signs. So there may or may not be a ribbon sign that does find its way there, but we're anticipating that it may not last very long before it's removed. So as, as an alternative solution to hopefully mitigate the transports entering into that Johnstown subdivision, there's the alternative to, to, to pass sort of a, no heavy trucks in that area, which, which OPP would be able to, to enforce. One of the items that I would caution on is that passing something and just erecting the signs with some type of public education program, then that subdivision to, to indicate that oil deliveries and those particular vehicles are permitted to, to, to enter and access that site because they have a purpose for being there, you know, either loading or unloading. So we should primarily focus on those vehicles that, for all intents and purposes, do not have a, a purpose for being in that location.
I'm going to support the recommendation, but the thing that's bothering me is that the truck driver has already made the error of turning east onto Cali, onto Cali Road Two, and he's getting, he's at Frederick Street now. He's already started his turn before he notices the sign that says not a truck route or no trucks permitted. Basically, he's committed. He's going to go down into Frederick Street anyway. But anyway, I don't have any problem with posting the signs, maybe it'll prevent one or two. What I do have a problem with, though, is, is that we're going to allow the trucks if they have a specific purpose or destination within the subdivision. Snow plowing, it'll never have a problem with an oil delivery and all that kind of thing, but there is a commercial business that's located in that subdivision, in a residential subdivision. There are tractor trailers that are coming in there and delivering product on a residential street, which then either sits on the, on the driveway or gets moved into a garage, and it happens frequently, and not only do we not enforce the fact that it's a residential area, we don't even penalize the truck driver. And, you know, so if we're going to put these signs up, I hope that we're going to penalize that truck driver, because he has no business being there in the first place. Neither does the commercial business either, by the way, but that's a different issue.
Are you talking about the subdivision to the east of, of Highway sixteen?
Yes. He's only going to be there until spring. Well, that's, I've heard that over and over and over again, but he's still there.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
We've been turned down to put a sign on MTO property, which is sixteen or four sixteen, whatever they want to call it. And in number two highway, now a county road, why can't we erect a sign at the end of sixteen on the county road property, finding out if they've started, come down, they've got to stop at the stop sign, even if they missed the curve and they come right ahead.
Can't make the turn, though. Can't make the turn right when you come to that stop sign. Can't go right.
He's actually got to see it before he gets to number two.
I've seen it happen too many times, so try, and then they turn left, go down by Michael and up, Safi Street. You just can't make it.
Well, we had grainhauer trucks, and they never had that turn there before, and the grainhauer trucks turn there all the time, so.
Then they need two lanes of the turn possible. They need two lanes.
Yeah, but they still, they see the sign ahead there, they're going to get over and make the turn, make the turn, so.
It's a get-out, though. The, the, the ideal place for the sign is about two or three hundred yards north of that junction.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, that's it, but if we can't, I think we'd prefer ahead to...
Well, just put one up.
Put one up at the end, rather than, than, once they, as you say, once they get down, if they turn down, they're, the truckers, they're going to turn around someplace, whoever's in the subdivision, or it's the next street down, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I want to kind of echo everybody's comments. I mean, we've sort of created the problem ourselves by having such great success in, in that location. This is one of the problems of, of that success, much like Prescott has with, with their truck stop and gas station, but nowhere to park a transport, and...
and gas station, but nowhere to park a transport, and they won't allow them to park anywhere. So kind of victims of our own success. I don't really think it's reasonable, if a truck does get off course, to expect it to drive all the way to Cardinal, go back on four oh one again, to turn around and come back to Johnstown. So if it does turn to the east, they are going to find somewhere, whether there's a sign there or not, and penalizing them from our success seems a little bit unreasonable on my part.
Mr. Packwood? Counselor, Billabong?
Oh, I'm opposed to the signs in our subdivision. It's not going to work. I know if I was driving and I missed it, you could put three signs up, I'm getting back to where I'm going.
Actually, there's an OPP sitting there in the corner, and you're going to turn, they're going to turn and go around, saying, I'm going to be gone before anybody comes here and charges me anyway. Well, I've got two hundred Giant Tiger trucks.
We've got two or three OPPs in there, so I don't think it's even going to work.
But at least we're showing we're doing something.
Well, go put one down four sixteen, like two hundred yards, like our mayor said, not say anything.
Mayor, just keep petitioning the MTO again and again to do something about it. This solution will not work.
Maybe petition their OPP a little harder, or maybe get a meeting up there.
Good idea. So the way I read the table here, there's quite a number of people that are thinking that these signs are not going to work. Oh, they're not.
No, they're not going to work. Absolutely not.
Well, if we're fairly convinced they're not going to work, then we really don't need to action the recommendation. Oh, that's okay. I don't think they're going to work either, but the only justification for doing them is it looks like we're doing something.
Try putting up one of those signs, like a sign of, like you said, two hundred yards. You keep, like our deputy mayor says, let's just keep calling it MTO.
Have we, for the MTO request or to the county, was the request for signage just Giant Tiger Boulevard, or was it signage that was indicating the industrial park area?
No, we seem to feel, on the basis of the complaints that we get from Johnstown, that these are trucks that are destined to the Giant Tiger Distribution Center, and somehow the drivers have gotten themselves confused. I guess they talk to people on the street. Once they get there and they can't get turned, and they're going so slow, and people are coming out, what the hell happened, and why are you here? So the feedback that I'm getting is that the ones that get, quote, "lost" into subdivision, were all trying to get to Giant Tiger. So the concept was that on the four sixteen coming down towards the junction, about four or five hundred yards back, we would put a sign that just said Giant Tiger that way. But we can't get permission from MTO to put a sign that says Giant Tiger that way. And their argument is that they don't want to use their signage to center out a commercial enterprise. That's their rationale. And I've seen the emails back and forth between Deborah and Mr. Grant and MTO, and so that's what they're hanging their hat on. Sorry.
So have we explored then doing it as industrial park area versus...
Oh, I see, as opposed to just saying Giant Tiger.
Sure.
Oh, I see. I don't know how we...
I mean, if they're saying no because it says Giant Tiger on it, to me, the next logical step would be industrial park area.
Or just say Giant Tiger Boulevard.
Well, yeah, you can say Giant Tiger Boulevard.
Surely a truck driver knows if it says Giant Tiger Boulevard this way that that's where Giant Tiger is.
Or, but I see what Deputy Mayor is saying. He's saying be even more generic, Johnstown Industrial Park that way.
Sure.
So through the chair, we have attempted Giant Tiger Distribution Center, Giant Tiger Boulevard, and a few other various combinations. We have not attempted to say industrial park with an arrow. We can certainly re-initiate our conversation with MTO and attempt to build a case on putting up a ribbon sign that indicates industrial park.
I don't see such a big why we're going through all this fuss. MTO is just putting screws to us.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Have we approached Giant Tiger and asked them to put a sign? Like I could put a sign up on four sixteen highway coming to my Sugar Bush. I've had the advertisement lots of times, it'll be twenty-five hundred dollars a year, pay eleven hundred dollars for them to manufacture the sign, and upload my sign, have hundreds of maple products turn this way.
That's the other point. What about these blue signs that they have all over the place for businesses? Like the Todd signs? Why couldn't Giant Tiger do that?
They're tourist destination signs. They're tourism destination signs. The blue signs, the Todd signs are tourism destination signs. You can say Kings Lock Distillery, that's a tourism destination.
Okay, gotcha. Well...
Anyway, Mr. Chair.
The feeling, the feeling around the table is that we should give it one more shot to see if we can promote our industrial park.
I would think personally, Giant Tiger just got in the business, I think personally, probably by next year at this time, you'll never hear this problem.
That's what I think.
They'll all have the destination set in their GPSes and the trucks, and it's just a new thing because drivers haven't been there before. Mostly these drivers are all constant drivers, Giant Tiger. Once they've been there once, they're not going to make a wrong turn the second time.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think the problem will just go away.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
But I give the staff full marks for their battles with MTO.
So can we just leave this in abeyance then, without...
No action.
Just no action? Okay, we'll do that. And that brings us to seven oh, which is a letter from Alton Halt, and this was addressed to Ms. McKinstry, but I think David should highlight this, just to make sure you get the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would summarize our solicitor's viewpoint as... That number one, that the suspension was valid, and I believe that the county and ministry had come to that conclusion prior to the tribunal hearing. And the next step was that the conditions summarized by the tribunal for moving forward are to confirm that conditions, assumptions, and circumstances that were made in the original. Environmental assessments are still applicable, and the proposed design is still appropriate. So I would say nothing definitive for those that were either for or against ED nineteen.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
A little bit of background on what exactly we sent to them. Was there a request for the summary? Or it just says this letter is a very short summary of the impact, that really short answer is, but I don't know what the actual question was.
Okay, well, we had hired Alton Halt.
I actually asked through the CAO with all due respect.
Frank, Mr. Mayor, you want to...
Go ahead.
Well, I will try to characterize. We had a resolution from the previous council that I believe that that council was not a willing host of, for grade nineteen. As part of the tribunal process, we could have, depending on the party statuses, and I cannot recall the exact status that we went in, but it was just basically for us to submit that resolution. And the lawyer went in on the first day of the tribunal hearing and submitted the resolution indicating council was not a willing host. So we were not a participant. I just, I actually, I want to say we were a participant, not a presenter...
Or a party.
Or a party. My apologies, there's four. So, yes, I want to say we were a participant, and our participation was putting forth others.
So the letter is a summation of that event?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments? Hearing done. Thank you, Mr. Director. Moves assigned to number eight, counsel inquiries, notice of motion. Do we have any? Hearing done, we'll move on, and it's the mayor's report. Does the mayor have a report to make?
Just a couple of things. So there's invitations coming to me that say, please notify your counselors. I'll just forward them to the director tomorrow. One of them is for the Grandville Federation of Agriculture Annual Banquet on March the first, and I think the other one is something to do with Shakespeare on March the second. And I don't, I don't think I forward them, but I'll forward them to you, and you can, or actually, I'll forward them to Rebecca, and she'll just circulate.
I got both of them.
You got both?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. I can never tell, because they just say invite as many counselors as you like.
Is that all?
That's it?
That's it? Okay. Question period. We have no one in the gallery, so there's no questions. We have no closed, no closed sessions.
I do have a question, though. Sorry, I was late, but what was the status on the seven thirty truck stop there and our money for the cleanup? I missed it. I came in late, I'm sorry.
So through the chair, we have not received any final update for the solicitor on that. I do get...
Can you look that up and see what's going on? But the receiver, I think it's in the receiver's chip still, that offer? Receiver is still holding the money.
And then Terrence hasn't come up with more money. Is that right? They offered it and all said no? Does that make sense?
No, I think the receiver held back from the proceeds of the sale sufficient dollars to cover our claim, but he has not had, he doesn't feel that he can release it without a court order to release it. In the meantime, they're trying to get the insurance company to pay, and the insurance company's not paying. So my, so further to the counselor's question, my own earlier, is, are we doing anything on this file? Are we waiting till the CAO gets back?
So through the chair, I certainly haven't done anything last week. I'll certainly look at it, see, check in, see if there's any status changes moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, which brings us to adjournment. I'm looking for a mover.
So move.
I'm looking for a secondary. Mr. Packwood, Mr. Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.